Them having to have appropriate parking for all those residences, they can't, they can't pencil it. And so they're arguing for demolishing this Hobie Wagner, this kind of Japanese design, if you know that building. It's, it's horrible that because these kind of things are happening without a can, a side consideration of what you're actually doing is you're making an argument for demolition of this stuff when it shouldn't be. Because that's what brings people here. You're killing the
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Your three minutes are up. Okay, now we have Lisa Spalding. Please go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you. I'm surprised that the city attorney's office has allowed a current member of the planning board to lead a petition to close the municipal airport. This has nothing to do with my opinion on whether or not to close the airport. The use of the airport may well come before the board during the member's tenure. And whether or not she is currently acting as a private citizen, the airport supporters would surely demand that she recuse herself for leading the petition. If the public sees this as a conflict of interest, it could distract from the important aspects of what will be a controversial decision on the fate of the airport. I'm not aware of recent scandals involving the planning board, but the work you do is very important. And I urge you to maintain a nerd neutral position on matters that will come before you. The residents of Boulder deserve a planning board. They feel judges matters fairly. I asked you not to include the airport in your letter recommending matters for the city council's 2024 work plan. This could be interpreted as lobbying and adversely affect both the public's faith in the board and the way residents view the airport. We all have issues we care deeply about, but board members should be aware of how the public perceives their actions. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments. I see no other hands raised for open comments, so over to you, Chair.
Do we have any? All right, so we, all right, we've no one signed up to speak. So now we go to approval of minutes. Did we have minutes to approve in this? We had no approval, no. All right, so now we go to discussion of dispositions, planning board call-ups and continuations. We have call-up items, site review amendment to redevelop a parking area on lots four and five of the Pearl East Business Park, four eight four five and four eight seven five Pearl East Circle with a new three-story hundred nine thousand and eighty-seven square foot research and development building and the call-up period expires on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. Does any, ML has her hands up?
Hopefully it's just one hand.
One hand, sorry.
Uh, so I had reached out to ask some questions before, and I have one final question. Let me see Chandler, um, I think this is your project?
Yes.
I have a, so my question is, um, you know, you talked about the, uh, or you clarified that the parking riding fifteen
Wait, ML, 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 you froze there for a minute. So can you start over again with the parking and then we lost you?
Oh, sorry. Am I, are you, am I still good?
You're still glitching, but we can hear your voice.
Okay, um, so the parking is fifteen more than required for the specific site, but across the whole PUD, there is a great reduction in parking. So my question Chandler is, does the entire PUD have access to the parking on this site?
So just to, just to clarify, it's, it's actually kind of the reverse. So the, the site as a whole, the nine lot PUD is overparked by fifteen spaces, but this project in particular is significantly below what would be required for the building.
Not it. Okay, no, yes, that is a different understanding. I thought this particular site had fifteen over what was required for its use, but I'm hearing you saying, no, that's not the case.
Yeah, no, this, this building, this hundred and nine thousand square foot building is only providing eighty-one parking spaces um, in, interior to the building. So um, that would equate to a pretty significant parking reduction if this were happening just on its own lot. Um, but across the entire PUD is shared parking. So the employees of this building um, would have access to additional parking if they desire. But yeah, overall, it's, it's reducing the surplus across the PUD significantly from something like four hundred and, four hundred and eighty-four spaces. I believe they're over now to, uh, to just fifteen. So it's replacing a ton of surface parking with this building.
Right? And, um, any need from this particular building could be accommodated elsewhere on the PUD is what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Perfect. I have no need to call this up. I just, um, obviously was still confused. Thank you so much for your answer.
Sure.
Thanks, ML. Mark, you turned on your mic.
Yes, um, I just have a question, and that is, uh, just it, I haven't analyzed this building in relation to the code, but is the reason that this is, um, not required to come before planning board is that it doesn't meet any of the thresholds? Or does it have something to do with the fact that it's a PUD from a number of years ago?
Um, kind of both. I mean, the, the project on its own doesn't, isn't asking for anything that would require an automatic planning board hearing. And because they're part of the PUD that has shared parking across the site, um, they're able to average the parking essentially across the PUD instead of treating this as its own individual site. Because yeah, if it was just its own site, then a sixty percent parking reduction would require a planning board hearing. But because it's in a PUD, that's not the way we calculate the parking requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, do you have any question? Does anyone want to call this up? But Kurt has a question.
Hi, yeah, thanks Chandler. I saw that there had been some PUD amendments in the past that allowed certain uses on lot four and certain uses on lot five. And now we're eliminating the lot line between those. So how does that work in terms of those allowed uses?
Um, the elimination of the lot lines doesn't really affect the allowed uses. Um, those approvals run with the land kind of regardless of whether they're subdivided or not. So, yeah, as far as the, the previously approved existing uses, those are still valid.
Okay, so in theory, part of this building would have some uses allowed on it and part of the building would have other uses allowed on it because the, the building is splitting the lot line, right?
Right. Yeah, I'm honestly not, um, one hundred percent familiar with the previous approvals you're referring to. Um, but I'm assuming there were four developments for the actual buildings that got built. So I, I don't think that any approved uses that weren't allowed by right through the zoning would kind of transfer to this building just automatically. Um, this building is not asking for any, you know, used review uses. So this is just the research and development building, and then the previously approved uses would still apply to those existing buildings where they're located.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt, did you want to call this up?
No.
All right, so we are not calling this item up. Chandler, thank you very much. Return to your previously, previously scheduled evening. Um, we're going to move on to public hearing items. We have one item tonight. A public hearing and consideration of a recommendation to the city council regarding a proposed ordinance amending Title X Structures BRC nineteen eighty-one, repealing the twenty twenty City of Boulder Energy Conservation Code and adopting by reference the twenty twenty-four City of Boulder Energy Conservation Code and setting forth related details. Uh, Josh is going to be presenting to us online, and I think we have Robert, Robert um, here as well. Uh, we've set aside ninety minutes total. Hopefully we'll, we'll, uh, wrap up in that time. And we expect fifteen to twenty minutes of presentation and Josh has asked that we go through the presentation before we ask questions. Take it away, Josh.
Thank you very much. I'll actually pass it on to Rob to go ahead and kind of get things started for us. And then he'll hand it back off to me for the presentation, but I'll go ahead and, uh, let me see if I can share my screen. Of course, it's right. All right, now where did that? Oh, it's right here. All right, one second. Let me share my screen. There it is. We, this is the screen. Let me make sure.
It hasn't come up yet, Josh.
Not a problem. Sorry, I'm just making sure that I get, I have my, I have a couple of monitors and I'm making sure that I get the right screen in the right space.
I know.
All right, I think. Okay, we're good. So I want to present that slide. Down here, alrighty, and why is it not showing up on the screen too? There we go. All right.
Great.
All right. And Rob, go ahead and take it away.
Uh, well, thank you, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight on the twenty twenty-four City of Boulder Energy Conservation Code updates from the twenty twenty City of Boulder Energy Conservation Updates. So some of the staff that have worked on this, I'll make some introductions with Brad Mueller, who's our Director of Planning and Development Services, Jonathan Cohen, Director of Climate Initiatives, uh, myself, I'm the Chief Building Official here at the City of Boulder, and Carolyn Elam, who is our Senior Sustainability Senior Manager, and of course, our subject matter expert, Josh Hanson, who's our Energy Code Compliance Principal Examiner. So the agenda for tonight's presentation, we're just going to go over the timeline for adoption and the overview of the top residential and commercial energy code updates from the twenty twenty version of the code. So just a little introduction on my part. What is the energy code? Well, the energy code is the document that lays out the minimum energy efficiency requirements for new construction alterations and additions to every building here within the City of Boulder. Why is it important? Well, it's important because buildings are major consumers of energy. Strict energy codes help reduce energy costs to businesses and residents and reduce the number of energy cost burden households across the city. Furthermore, the energy code is one of the most effective tools we have to cut greenhouse gas emissions, encourage the transition away from fossil fuels towards renewables. So with that, a little brief history of the City of Boulder Energy Conservation Code, which I'll refer to as the COBEC from here on out. So the City of Boulder first created the COBEC in twenty seventeen. The twenty-seven COBEC was based on the twenty twelve I E C C, which is another acronym for International Energy Conservation Code. That's a code that's created by the International Code Council. We created our own code here in Boulder to reflect the desire of our community to push the envelope, the energy efficiency beyond the base level laid out by the International Code Council and adopted by the surrounding jurisdictions. In twenty twenty, this code was further updated to create the twenty twenty City of Boulder Energy Conservation Code, and that was based on the twenty eighteen I E C C. Tonight, we're presenting the third iteration of this code, which is the twenty twenty-four COBEC. This code, this COBEC, like the previous versions, is based on the I E C C code. It's based on the twenty twenty-one I E C C code. This code was developed by staff, now consultants, Naresco, over the last eight months. And we've created this code in the direction of council, planning board, the environmental advisory board, with a significant amount of feedback and public outreach. The proposed changes this time around have taken a slightly different direction from previous updates to the energy code. We've acknowledged that we're beginning to reach the point of diminishing marginal return on investment with thermal envelope upgrades, both in terms of financially and in terms of embodied carbon. So a major focus of this update is building electrification, which is the next major step towards achieving our climate goals shown in the infographic below. As you can see, by twenty thirty, we're aiming for an emissions reduction of seventy percent, net zero by twenty thirty-five, and carbon positive by twenty forty. And I'm pleased to tell you that we've actually taken some steps towards that twenty forty goal with this version of the COBEC. Didn't exist before with some embodied carbon provisions that weren't, didn't exist previously. Um, with that, can I have the next slide, please, Josh? So a timeline with this, uh, the draft code first became available for public review on the thirtieth of November last year. Tonight, we obviously have our planning board hearing. Um, first hearing, first public reading with council will be on the twenty-first of March, and second public reading will be on the eighteenth of April. Uh, we're targeting an implementation date, so this will go live date, any project submitted after the first of July, assuming everything goes to plan, uh, will be submitted under this code. Um, we're going to have a little bit of delays to any projects that are currently in the pipeline, don't have to redesign to a new code standard. So with that, I'm going to pass you off to our subject matter expert, Josh, to give you a, uh, overview of the actual code updates.
Thank you, Rob. So before we kind of get into the overall updates for the energy code, let's take a night, let's take a stroll down memory lane, we'll say, and we'll look at kind of where we currently sit with the current, uh, twenty twenty COBEC on the commercial side first. So the current twenty twenty COBEC requires a twenty to twenty-five percent energy use intensity savings over their ASHRAE ninety point one twenty sixteen baseline. Think of this energy use intensity savings as a miles per gallon for buildings with the lower, the number, the better. Another thing that the twenty twenty COBEC introduced was performance backstops, and these were seen in the, uh, in the envelope requirements that could not be, uh, gone below, as well as some of the mechanical efficiency requirements. The twenty twenty COBEC also introduced a solar requirement that would require a five set, five percent energy offset of the entire, uh, building's energy use at a minimum, and also introduced EV or electric vehicle capable, ready and electric vehicle service equipment requirements for parking that's associated with these buildings. We also introduced a difference, a, a little bit of a change from the national code, which is a level one through four alteration. With the twenty twenty-four COBEC, we continue to push, um, on the energy efficiency requirement. That said, we look at ten to fifteen percent energy use intensity savings over the ASHRAE ninety point one twenty twenty-two baseline. The reason for this is as the codes have gotten stringent, more stringent over the years, we see that there's less of a need for an additional twenty to twenty-five percent savings, and that ten to fifteen savings is usually going to be sufficient on these projects. And the reason for that, too, is we're also looking at the all-electric new construction requirement with exceptions on the commercial front. We've also expanded the electric vehicle requirements to align with the, the state model code, as well as updates to the levels of alteration to help with simplification for that process. And we've looked at also modifying the all-electric and electric-ready requirements for existing buildings. On the residential front, the twenty twenty COBEC required any homes greater than three thousand square feet to be net zero energy. We also introduced performance backstop similar to the commercial counterpart, but these are in forms of entered or envelope values that you could not go lesser than. Uh, we also introduced solar-ready requirements for future installation of solar on roofs, as well as offset requirements for any uh, outdoor heating, like pool heating, spa heating, radiant heating, things of that nature. We also introduced electric vehicle-ready requirements for single-family duplexes and townhomes, as well as the level one through four alteration. With the update to the twenty twenty-four City of Boulder Energy Code or the COBEC, we're introducing an all-electric new construction requirement with no exceptions. We also are looking at pre and post-solar ERI targets. So ERI is similar to the EUI we talked about in the commercial piece. It's a miles per gallon on the building. The lower the number, the better. And of course, we're trying to target zero on these. Um, we also introduced solar-ready and electric vehicle requirements that align with the state code similar to the commercial side. And then also we updated the levels of alteration for simplification, as well as modifying the all-electric and electric-ready requirements for existing homes. So let's go ahead and jump into the residential piece on the updates. Um, so the energy rating index, previously, as I mentioned, any homes that were greater than three thousand square feet needed to be at net zero. This is still the case under the twenty twenty-four COBEC. The difference is, before getting to, to net zero, we require, um, projects to hit an ERI of fifty. What this basically entails is that buildings have to rely on envelope, mechanical, lighting, uh, water heating efficiencies really to get down to an ERI of fifty before putting solar on. What this did is this really helped us reduce or, uh, eliminate the need for requiring a backstop because we're basically requiring efficiency to get to an ERI of fifty and then solar renewables to get down to zero. And the saying usually that you hear or I, we've heard many times is efficiency before renewables. Um, something that's a little different from this code or from our previous code is for any unit or for any homes that are, uh, less than three thousand square feet, we also are going to require an ERI of fifty, but instead of getting to net zero, like the larger homes over three thousand, uh, we're going to require some portion of solar to at least get them to, uh, an ERI of thirty. This really helps to provide a pathway kind of for these homes on our, on our path to net zero by twenty thirty. Another update to mention is that we've updated our prescriptive compliance pathway and actually lifted the threshold from five hundred square feet to a thousand square feet. This is to really help with smaller homes and ADUs in City of Boulder, as well as existing building additions. We've also looked at restructuring of the R-value tables, um, per the twenty twenty-one and the twenty twenty-four I E C C or the International Energy Conservation Code. This is actually a requirement by the state to align, if not improve, over the twenty twenty-one, uh, International Energy Conservation Code at the next update for the energy code, so we're making sure we align with that as well. One other thing I wanted to mention that I don't have on this slide, but, um, there are many programs that are out there that are above code that are also available that we would definitely be open to considering. I know that there's a ton of money out there for the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act, and, uh, a lot of projects have, have that available to be able to take, uh, to be able to take credit for some of those and really kind of help them push the envelope, no pun intended, above and beyond. And also, uh, there's not just money from the federal government, but many of the, uh, utilities out there as well are offering incentives. The next item I wanted to look at is, as Rob had mentioned, we're, we're looking, really move to an all-electric code on this. Um, so what this basically says is that any mechanical systems for heating, cooling, water heating, cooking, clothes drying, fireplaces, pool, spa, heating shall be all-electric or fueled by another, other non-fossil fuel derived energy source. Another update that we made to the energy code to help align with the twenty-one I E C C as required by the state is we've introduced a point and credit system to require an additional level of conservation. Something that we really kind of turned away from, from the, the International Energy Code is not just focus on, uh, a building and energy efficiency, but also look at kind of other aspects of, of conservation and not just focus on energy. So from the, from, uh, hearing resounding responses from council and the boards, we've also included some embodied carbon credits to really start our path on addressing embodied carbon encoded in some materials. Um, and so more information on some of those additional measures are going to be found on page thirteen of the memo. And as you can see, we've got a list of some of the measures in here. There are more that can be found in section R four oh eight of the actual draft code. That was a attachment A of the, uh, the memo that was sent out. And one of the last pieces I wanted to mention, uh, in the residential space is what we've done with the existing building piece. So on the additions side, as I mentioned, we've lifted the threshold from five hundred square feet up to a thousand square feet for anything less than that to be able to, to, uh, follow the prescriptive pathway or the modeling ERI path or miles per gallon path, just make sure that they're modeling. Um, anything that's over a thousand square feet would have to comply with the ERI path, which requires modeling. Um, as for the compliance side of things, this is really the same as the twenty twenty COBEC. It requires a thirty percent reduction from the existing building ERI, or you can meet an ERI of fifty, which is actually the new construction requirement prior to installing solar. One of the other key changes that we've made and implemented in this also is, um, the new equipment and appliances shall be all-electric. Um, and then also I skipped over on accident, um, air leakage testing has also been adjusted to provide some flexibility in the existing buildings. Boulder has a lot of, uh, older home stock, and we, and we understand that, and we want to reward people for doing the right thing by making their homes and buildings tighter and not penalize them for being unable to hit new construction targets that may be unattainable. All right, on the flip side, looking at alterations, um, before we get into that, just to kind of give a quick overview on kind of our levels, one through three alterations. So a level one alteration is, say you're doing a kitchen remodel, we're replacing cabinets in the kitchen, replacing a couple fixtures. That's a level one alteration. Level two alteration as well, we're replacing cabinets and fixtures, but we're going to move some of the walls around the kitchen as well. All right, that's level two. Well, now that's kind of exceeded more than fifty percent of the building space itself. That's when it becomes a level three alteration, is when it exceeds fifty percent of the, uh, the building area. So for level one through three alterations, there is no requirement for all-electric or electric ready, uh, lecture ready. If it's a level three alteration and they're going to be replacing the mechanical equipment as well, the replaced mechanical equipment, that space will have to be made electric ready for future installation of an electric appliance or equipment. If it's a level three alteration, but what we're calling really is a gut rehab, where they're replacing mechanical equipment and substantially altering the envelope. If the, if the space conditioning equipment was combustion or say natural gas, um, it cannot be replaced with another natural gas appliance, but it can be, uh, an all-electric primary space conditioning piece of equipment can be installed. So like a heat pump can be installed for your primary or principal source of space conditioning, and the furnace may be retained as a backup source if desired. At the end of the day, with our code, we really don't want to strand, um, strand assets that have really a long lifetime, possibly ahead of them. We know some of these equipment can last for years. And so that's the reason with the furnaces, we don't want to, um, discourage people from getting away or from ripping them out if they think that it's going to help them kind of on the back end, they can really retain it. Um, as I mentioned, with the air leakage testing being adjusted similarly to, uh, additions, we don't want to penalize projects for not being able to hit new construction targets, but being flexible and understanding and working with them and, and giving them credit where credit's due for just getting goods air sealing and reducing leakage in their homes. And then also in terms of ERI compliance, it really is the same thing as the, uh, the additions, uh, with thirty percent reduction from the existing building or an ERI of fifty. Another thing that's been also introduced is we actually have a true compliance process that's been detailed out for easier understanding. So when you come in, you're looking to do an alteration. We've got some kind of guidance built into the code to help know that, hey, when we go into permitting, these are the items that are going to be needed. At the end of the project, when we go to final inspection, these are the items that are going to be looked at. That way, everyone kind of is on the same page going into these projects versus getting to the end of the project and going, I didn't know that was required. So we've actually started, decided to build this into the code to help. Some other notable mentions on the updates is we actually have a new minimal renewable energy systems requirement. What this does, this allows the chief building official to be able to adjust the post-solar ERI target if say the map, the, the roof space has been fully maximized. Say we've maximized the roof space on the building, we need to go off-site for an additional, say, fifteen percent of solar to ensure that we actually can meet the whole requirement, get it down to net zero. We are trying to discourage going off-site. We want the solar to remain with the property. Um, and so in that being said, we have the ability to say, if they can show us that it would take an additional fifteen percent to comply, we have the ability to adjust that ERI target and say, you know what, with what you have on site is adequate, and we will go ahead and apply that in, in, uh, for, we'll prove that for compliance, excuse me. So jumping over the, the commercial side of things, similar to the residential piece, we require all-electric, basically mechanical systems for heating, cooling, water heating, clothes drying, cooking, and shall be all-electric fossil fuel, um, as well as pool and spa heating, as well as just under a different section of the energy code. Um, but we do have exceptions. And so, uh, a lot of these exceptions really circulate around some of the occupancies, the unique occupancies that we still really have in Boulder. And so these are exceptions for any systems that are serving laboratories or hospitals or large industrial S one occupancies or emergency generators or commercial cooking equipment. There's a couple of footnotes and caveats to be aware of. So for any of the listed exceptions, the first thing I will mention is that space and water heating have to be all-electric. Um, but where the energy source is fossil fuel, it shall be offset by a hundred percent onsite renewable energy. The second footnote or caveat is that for emergency generators, commercial cooking and scientific and industrial process loads are going to be exempt from this offset requirement. The reason for this is a lot of these instances, most of these occupancy types are going into an existing building that they don't own. So it puts us between a rock and a hard place to really require solar to be installed on a roof. Plus, at the scale for some of those offset requirements on like commercial cooking, for example, um, it may not be feasible. And so these are some of the things we've really taken into account. Uh, some more information on this can be found on the memo starting on page seven. The next item I wanted to talk about is kind of our performance targets and where they were and where they are. First, we're going to look at, um, basically two of the three paths that the ninety-nine percent of the projects go through through the city. The first one is the fixed performance target path. So as we mentioned, this requires all-electric new construction, with the exceptions as we mentioned. Um, what we've done is we've left the EUI targets the same as the twenty twenty COBEC. The reason for this is by moving to all-electric, basically we're removing that silver bullet that was natural gas because of the low cost per unit for natural gas. Electricity has a higher cost, so a lot of the times if you have natural gas in the building, it's an easier path through compliance. By doing that, it's going to require some design teams to really kind of go back and think about how they want to achieve compliance. And by doing that, that's kind of why we left the targets the way they were. That being said, these targets are pretty aggressive as they are currently, and so that was the other reason that we, uh, we really didn't want to move the goalpost on people while taking away their silver bullet at the same time. Um, but from some of the feedback we've had from some, from the boards and council, we've added some additional occupancies, as you can see, for large offices, retail stores, as well as restaurant targets. Um, this path will also no longer require a five percent solar offset. That said, these numbers will require some portion of solar, whether that's three percent, five percent, ten percent. I don't feel that it's up to, we, the city needs to dictate that anymore, as the projects are going to have to do it moving forward anyways. Another thing to note is mentioned previously is natural gas that's used in any of the projects has to be a hundred percent offsite or renewably offset. And no more than ten percent of that offset can count towards the energy, uh, count towards achieving the energy intensity target of the building. And then only onsite solar can be used. We're trying to get away from the offsite requirements or offsite allowances, excuse me. The next modeling, the next pathway we want to look at is the modeling baseline path, which basically this is a path that if, um, if you don't have an occupancy that fits into one of the categories to the right or multiples ones of those, then you could go the modeling baseline path. Similar to the fixed performance, this is still an all-electric new construction requirement, of course, with the exceptions. We've updated the baseline, as we mentioned, to the ASHRAE ninety point one dash twenty-two, um, uh, standard. And then we also are looking at requiring at least a minimum of five percent, um, of, of solar on this project as well. And the reason for that is with the model baseline path, there are, there's more flexibility in the modeling. And with that being said, we wanted to ensure that no matter what, at least five percent of solar was being installed in projects. A couple other updates that we did in the commercial piece is building thermal envelope testing, we've updated the commercial air leakage testing requirements from point five point four down to point two five C F M per square foot of the envelope. This is actually in alignment with the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as Fort Collins has been doing this for the past at least six years. There are some exceptions for projects that may not that have an issue with complying, and so we've given a pathway forward for projects and just don't throw our hands up and say you have to, well, you have to meet this. But we wanted to give solutions. We've also updated the dwelling unit enclosure testing from point two five down to point two oh. This is more to align with the the residential counterpart with the three air change requirement. It's not comparable to do three air changes in multifamily because of certain certain situations in the unit that we can discuss if there's any further questions. So that's kind of why we don't want to push it down to like point one five, which is really where the three three air changes is. The other thing I want to mention here too is we've also introduced sleeping unit testing as an option versus doing the whole building test. Some folks might want to isolate sections of the building and be able to test those as well, and so that gives that ability. And by by introducing these, our updating these testing values, we've also added some additional references to air barrier, air sealing and insulation installation specifications. So we're not just going to say you have to hit this target, we're going to show you tools as to where requirements can be in order to help meet these requirements and help hit these these testing values. We've also updated and added duck leakage requirement or duck leakage testing for multifamily as well as ventilation testing, which aligns with the twenty-one energy code. So we've updated some of the prescriptive minimums, as we've mentioned, in envelope lighting, electrical and mechanical efficiencies to help align closer with the international codes as well as the Ashray ninety point one. As you can see in envelope, we've really increased the wood framed wall value for group R or multifamily from R thirteen to plus nine to R thirteen plus eleven. We've increased slab R value for multifamily from R fifteen to R twenty. We've also increased the solar heat gain coefficients for operable windows. This is a bit of a change from the old code because it used to focus on elevation in terms of the efficiency. Now it looks at fixed windows versus operable. On the mechanical side, we've updated efficiencies for air conditioners, heat pumps, packaged units and boilers. And we've added additional tables for V R F systems, unit serving, computer rooms, indoor pools, heat pump recoveries and so on. A lot of those updates were really to align with the twenty-one energy code as well as Ashray. We've updated lighting values to line with both codes as well, and similarly with electrical. Some of the new things to mention are the automatic receptacle controls and fifty percent of the specific spaces, as well as energy monitoring for buildings over twenty-five thousand square feet. Similar to our counterpart in residential, we also have our additional conservation requirements for commercial. This differs a little bit here because with commercials, since we do allow mixed fuel or or natural gas in some of the building occupancies, as seen by the exceptions, we have different credit amounts for mixed fuel versus all-electric buildings. Below are some of the samples of the additional conservation measures that we've incorporated. And as I've mentioned, we've looked at really kind of bringing in some embodied carbon reductions so we can start to start addressing that embodied carbon piece and look at carbon emissions. We've also looked at providing credits for heating and cooling efficiencies, heat pump, water heating, battery storage, just to name a few. Some more information on these additional measures are in page thirteen of the memo, or you can check out section four oh six of the attachment A, which is the twenty twenty-four COBEC. The next item I wanted to go over is kind of the electric vehicle requirements and the updates really to help align with the the model state code. So as you can see on the right, that's where we were with the twenty twenty COBEC, the twenty twenty-four COBEC piece is kind of where I'm really going to focus. So everything in that table that's in black is in alignment with the state code. Anything in green is really where we're looking to exceed the state code. So for example, for less than ten ten spaces, the state requires electric or electric vehicle ready for fifteen percent. We looked at why not require a hundred percent? It's only ten spaces, let's future proof these spaces, it's minimal. For anything greater than ten ten parking spaces, the E V capable was at ten percent and E V capable light was at thirty percent requirements by the state, we pushed those to forty and forty. The reason for this too is that looking at this now, a hundred percent of parking spots in a multifamily project are now going to have some portion of E V. A couple other things to note here, we do allow trade-off for up to five spaces for one level three charger. And so in terms of a level three charger, think about a Tesla supercharger that you see at a gas station. A level two charger would be a two twenty, a two twenty volt, thirty amp charger that you might have at your home or at a, you know, at one of the city locations possibly. And then also a level one charger is basically going to be like a plug into an outlet and a really slow charge. Kind of like a trickle charge is what I think of on those. And then the last comment in here is once all the E V spaces have been achieved or have been allocated, any remaining spaces, say if it's specifically for a parking garage, shall be E V capable light, which basically means they have to install conduit and make sure that there's space available for electrical service in the future. On the commercial side of things, we've really updated kind of to to make sure that we are, we we wanted to exceed kind of what the state requirements are. And so as you can see, for the E V S E installed spaces, we require two, which currently the state requires none. And the reason for that is we already were requiring, excuse me, where was it? So we updated that, excuse me, for to be in alignment with the state. So and then for that, what we did is because of it being less than ten spaces outside of the E V S E and the E V ready space requirements, what this would do is basically any of the remaining spaces just need to be E V capable light, which means they need to install the the conduit and make sure that there's panel space available. If it's greater than ten spaces, they have to have five percent E V S E. This is, I think, different from the two percent requirement of the state, five percent is currently how we were previously. E V ready is at ten percent, the state only requires eight. And then on the E V capable light, the state's only looking to require ten and we're looking to require at least twenty percent. Similarly to the residential piece, we're also looking to allow a trade-off of ten spaces for one level three charger here. We're really trying to encourage, love, excuse me. We're really looking to try and encourage level three chargers, especially in terms of the commercial spaces here. So that being said, we did have a couple of questions for the planning board. And so the first question is, does the planning board support the twenty twenty-four COBEC as drafted in attachment A? The second question is, does the planning board support the allowance of natural gas water heating for affordable? Would would this planning board support the allowance of natural gas water heating for affordable multifamily projects on a case-by-case basis? And then three, would the planning board support a motion to recommend to the city council the adoption of the twenty twenty-four City of Boulder Energy Conservation Code? Thank you for your time and I'd leave it open for any questions.
All right, thanks, Josh. I think we're going to have a bunch of questions. If you could take down the slide and bring back our other board members.
Yes.
And what we'll we'll take, we'll start with clarifying questions. And then we'll go to public comment and then we will come back for discussion. And if I don't, Thomas, if you don't mind emailing the key questions to Kurt and M L so that they have them in front of them. That'd be great. All right, so let's start with clarifying questions. Hands up if you have a question. Mark has a question.
I'll do a couple and then and then give it a break and see if someone else asks similar or takes care of my questions for me. I'm familiar with commercial solar in a multi-tenant property and onsite. And is, am I correct in that Excel due to them being a publicly regulated utility, having exclusive rights to provide service in our area, does not allow anyone else to, other than Excel, to meter electrical production to their tenants?
I think I'll take that one. Good evening, planning board, I'm Carolyn Elam with the Climate Initiatives Department. Great question, Mark, the the rules have changed a lot around master metered solar systems on multi-tenant properties. So Senate Bill, I think it's twenty-one two sixty-one, but I might be wrong on the exact number, which was sponsored by our own Senator Fenberg, actually modified the requirements. So yes, the master metering is that metered by Excel Energy, but there's new processes in place now where those credits can be allocated to the individual units. And so, for example, taking a multifamily housing property with a centralized solar system, they can allocate a share to each unit on that property of the net metering credits that would then apply to the individually metered residential units, if that answers your question.
Mostly, but let's say I have a onsite solar system producing hundred and ten percent of the annual electrical consumption. And it's commercial building, three tenants in the building. Am I able to actually bill my tenants as a building owner for their consumption? So if someone uses two thousand kilowatt hours a month, and am I able to charge my tenant for that electrical consumption that I produced on my roof?
Yes, my understanding is you can. I have to pull that bill up again to look at what what limitations might be on that. I think you're limited in how much you can charge, but it allowed for you to recover the cost of that system.
Okay, thank you. I hope I hope that's the case because our this future focus on onsite solar, again, has has some real implications for both residential and commercial landlords as they try to allocate and recover costs for installing the system. The level of alteration when we talk, again, this this stems from personal experience, and so I'm I'm kind of curious. First of all, who decides if something is a level three or greater than level three? Who who actually makes that determination? Because in a in a remodel situation, I'll just recount my personal experience. We modified the envelope of our current residence by fourteen square feet. We added fourteen square feet on a twenty-four hundred square foot home, but we touched darn near because of mold, asbestos, poor lighting. Just it was flooded in twenty thirteen, there was hardly a surface that we didn't touch. So would, you know, are we, because we didn't modify the envelope, are we a level three or lower or would we be a level three or higher? Or would that be a judgment call by a building inspector or who who would make that that decision?
I can take a crack at that one. So, I mean, basically those levels are spelled out in the international existing building code. Josh kind of did a pretty good job of explaining what they are, but anytime you alter more than fifty percent of the floor area, so in your example, if you say took off all the drywall and tore down interior walls and that exceeded fifty percent, that would be a level three alteration.
Okay.
Now, if you were just doing flood repair, like let's say you had flood repair and you just flooded the bottom, that would only be a level one alteration because you're not actually changing the layout of the space, you're not changing the insulation levels or anything like that. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, you know, when you get into asbestos mitigation
Right.
and suddenly you want to install a light fixture, but you're now cutting into drywall that has asbestos contamination and you start removing large large areas of of a drywall and anyway, it's it's it can be a very I would imagine it would be very subjective and maybe counter to the goal of reusing an existing house. Because if 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 by going to a higher level of alteration, but if I'm going into a higher category, does that actually incentivize me to just scrape the house and start over with different systems and stuff?
So that's a great question, it really, and we're trying to avoid that with this code update. So no, we're not requiring you necessarily to bring the entire building up in terms of thermal envelope, in terms of insulation when you do that. But we are requiring you to install an electric heating system. So if you were to take all your drywall off and expose all the walls and you're going to re-insulate, you wouldn't necessarily, you would only need to achieve a thirty percent improvement over where you were at before. So that isn't a isn't a big lift, but that's in recognition of the fact we have a lot of hundred-year-old homes in Boulder and we we don't want to scrape those. You know, they have two by four walls, they're leaky. If we tell them they have to achieve the same standards as a current building, well, this it's not possible or or it's not economically possible. Put it that way, so they're going to scrape it. So this whole code update was intended to minimize the impact on that while still recognizing we want to see some improvement in carbon efficiency and energy efficiency moving forward in the future.
So to that end, if, and great, I appreciate that answer. If a homeowner is going to be required to, because they're doing level three plus alteration to change their mechanical systems, is the level of cost effectiveness of ground source heat pump, air source heat pump, et cetera, now close to within ten fifteen percent of that of a ninety-seven percent efficient condensing gas furnace, gas hot water heater?
Yes, let me just clarify one point here, we're not requiring anyone to replace their mechanical systems. It's if they do a level three alteration and they tell us, hey, we're also going to replace it. At that point, we require all that principle. But to answer your follow-up question, yes, most air source heat pumps we're seeing on the market today achieve a coefficient of performance of three, which means they put three units of energy out for every unit of energy going in. So actually, you're getting four units total because you also get that that waste heat is recovered from the unit itself. So about four four hundred percent efficient effectively. To your point, the very best condensing boiler on the market right now is ninety-seven percent efficient. So even if electricity is two or three times the price of natural gas, it's still cost competitive. And the price of the units themselves have come down substantially in the last five years. And the trajectory is just going to keep falling, you know, they get the price is going to keep coming down. So that's why we feel this is the time to do this electrification, it's it's actually cost effective at this point in time.
Okay, I'm going to ask one more and then I'll then I'll be done for a little bit. Why would you choose to only allow for the or not allow require the electrification for charging of automobiles versus a broader range of vehicles, bikes, micro mobility, things that we may not, you know, have scooters, whatever it might be. Right now, your definition of a vehicle seems to be strictly auto light truck. Why that limitation?
Be honest, we're based this mostly on the state requirements for E V charging. I'm not aware of any I don't know that much, to be completely honest with you. Have any aftermarket charging, you know, here we have the charge point systems, which have a standard E V S E for electric vehicles. I'm not aware of any technology like that specifically for bicycles or scooters or anything like that. Most of that equipment that I've seen seems to just plug into a regular wall outlet.
Bingo, so that that is the requirement of a hundred and twenty volt, three-pronged wall outlet would go a long way towards, you know, there's myriad thousands of different styles and voltages of chargers. But the an out, you know, surface mounted outlet strip on a concrete wall in secure bike storage and secure micro mobility storage would go a long way towards, I think, helping us not only reach we reach our goals for vehicle electrification with a broader expansion of the term vehicle.
Yeah, that's great feedback, I appreciate that. I will say in the residential code that's required by the National Electric Code, you've got to meet outlet spacing. But on the commercial side of things, it's not so that it's probably something we could look at adopting when we adopt the twenty twenty-four building code because we already have some amendments in there along those lines, but that is that is great feedback, thank you.
Okay, I'm done for now, thanks.
Excellent, all right, I'm M L, I'll call on you next, and I see that your cat left, the cat left the building.
They're circling me, they want their dinner.
Then they have questions.
Yes, thank you so much, Josh, and is it Adrian? I don't know if I can.
Rob.
Oh, Rob, sorry. For your presentations, I am going to ask some questions that were part of our packet in different kinds of categories. So in the public input, there was a question about making slab edge insulation mandatory. Did that get incorporated? Is that four oh two point two point nine point one? Did it get incorporated in?
So slab edge is not mandatory, it is a option, I mean, basically when you model it, if now here you're going to prescriptive and you had to build a home prescriptively, yes, it would be mandatory. With the modeling piece of it, you're able to model and use maybe overcome it with better wall, above-grade walls, better windows, things like that. And so that's kind of where we we were with that. That actually comment came from another municipality because that ship sailed on them and they recommended it to us. And so with us, honestly, if you're going prescriptive in building code, it would be required.
Right.
If it's modeled, there are certain buildings that we do see it that do come in with slab edge insulation. But the the way that the code is really designed is that it provides that flexibility in modeling to be able to trade off certain requirements. Um, and that is one of them, so.
Okay, thank you. In the uh background information on page seven, uh the planning board feedback. Uh, one of the things that uh one of the comments you made was that several city staffs have committed to exploring. Exploration of an embodied carbon program as a twenty twenty four work plan item. Did that actually happen? Is that on?
It's happening.
Yeah, I I can speak to that one, Josh. Yeah. So actually, Carolyn and I have been talking about that one this week already, and that that is a twenty twenty four work plan item. We've been looking at some different sources like the MBI um bodied carbon overlay. And we have a longer term plan to develop a a much more thorough program regarding embodied energy. Um, we do believe it's beyond the scope of operational energy and it deserves its own code. So we can address it correctly.
What's your end game with that? I mean, I saw that it is um incorporated into the um proposed uh amendments here. But what is the end game with this bigger work plan?
Uh, it would be to create an embodied carbon code that regulates more than just building carbon emissions, but site carbon emissions. Right now, we're still at a pretty early days with, you know, with environmental product disclosures and the ability to even measure that. So right now, we're just kind of in the scoping stage of things. I will say we do have intention of adopting some portions of the MBI embodied carbon overlay with the twenty twenty four coded option. Um, but that'll be a preliminary step towards a longer longer term project.
Okay.
And maybe I, the only thing I would add is, I mean, I think our intention is to also have a clear roadmap of how we're going to make incremental changes over time towards um an established goal. And so we'll be talking um with planning board and council in in the coming year about, you know, what those targets should be based on on what we're finding in terms of best practices and and opportunities. So I think we're looking at, we need to study kind of where we're at and where the challenges are locally. And then lay out that that long term plan and then start to implement it through not just regulatory strategies, but if there's voluntary things that we should be looking at as well.
Is I I I'm under I'm understanding that the goal is to have a carbon code? Right?
Brad has just stepped up to the podium.
Hi, Brad.
Yeah.
I can see your back.
After Carolyn, if if you had some more to add, Carol.
No, please go ahead, Brad.
Okay, uh Brad Mueller, Director of Planning and Development Services. Um, as either Carolyn or Rob mentioned, we're still in the scoping phase for that ML. But uh what we do know is that it uh likely needs to be comprehensive, staged over many years, incremental, as Carolyn alluded to. Uh, we want to make sure that we're thinking carefully about how any new regulation can also be enforced over time. Uh, because this is relatively cutting edge. And we also want to make sure that we're thinking about uh city policy and uh the practices of uh city construction relative to that. Uh, as well as uh whether that there are appropriate carrots to add to the sticks that that are envisioned through code regulation. So i- in summary, we we envision a comprehensive look at the at the whole um concept of embodied carbon.
Would this um have a a useful component to consider carbon impacts of projects holistically? As they come up for review or legislative updates as they come up? You know, rather than just say, here's a target and and here's the code to implement, you know, to help us achieve that target. Would it provide all the research you'll be doing? Would that um, could that lead to some manner of a um of a filter for a carbon filter, if you will, for us to for anybody to be considering? What are the carbon impacts of the decision that's beforehand? And it may not be um a a specific building strategy that we're looking at, but it could be. Carolyn, you're nodding. You understand?
Yeah, no, I love the question, ML. I I think um some form of calculator or way to assess is um is definitely a great portion of this. We're just starting to craft um a request for proposals that would go out to bring in a consultant to help us develop this. And then and I think that's a great idea. And, you know, we we fully understand that um it's not just the construction code. Um, whether it's the energy code or or new construction codes that impact embodied carbon decisions. And certainly, you know, we understand that some of the other requirements may have um embodied carbon consequences. And so it is our intent to try and and better inform that decision making by understanding, you know, what levers are are impacting that. So um I I really I really like where you were heading with that.
I'm glad to understand what I'm asking. That's very cool. Thank you so much. Um, uh, let me see, I have one last general question and on um. And maybe I didn't understand it, but this is again in the in the sort of preliminary. On page thirteen, you have a table three. Uh, and maybe, no, I don't think you looked at um. So the EV charging infrastructure requirements for one to ten spaces in group are? None are required to be installed. Is that correct? Is that zero?
No, they're so they're all um fully wired circuits, but not um but we don't currently require an actual physical. Right. Charging station for the small, the small lots. We do require all of them to be terminated um at a junction box or or outlet. So that you could add one later, but we didn't impose the the requirement of providing one. As as compared to the larger lots, I'm just acknowledging that there's a pretty substantial cost to that equipment. And we're we're, you know, through code trying to at least future proof for for occupants. So that, you know, if, for example, um they do have charging needs, um they can work with, you know, a what's a smaller landlord to be able to um add that charging infrastructure. So that you at least don't have to run the new circuits. Um, it's it's just, you can just install the station. But we understand there's a lot of complexity to how you recover, you know, how you manage access to charging infrastructure. And and on the smaller lots, we were just concerned about um driving affordability up by requiring the actual equipment to be installed. So that's what you're seeing in that is the balance we were trying to strike.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Those are the questions for now. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Uh, okay, thanks, ML. Kurt, your turn.
Great, thank you. And I'm sorry, I feel very uninformed about a lot of this stuff. So I'm sorry if a lot of my questions are fairly ignorant. One quick quest uh follow up on that previous question. You talk about the EV charging in terms of a lot, but a single parcel may have multiple lots, right? So does it really mean the amount of of spaces for a parcel?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, so then, uh, let's see. On the residential side, we've got these limits of a thousand square feet for certain things and three thousand square feet for certain things. Those are for the entire building, right? Not per unit? So you would have the same requirements for a three thousand square foot single family houses for three thousand square foot? No.
No, it's that's per unit for multi-family. So um if each individual unit is a thousand square feet, it would fall in a thousand square feet rather than the three thousand square feet under your using your scenario.
Okay, but I so that's for multi-family, the R two, right? No, sorry.
No, for also for residential duplexes, um townhomes, um, yeah. They're treated as units.
All of those are per unit. Okay, great. Um, and then so there there are requirements for the onsite offset, right? Um, and is that based, how how is that calculated? Is that based on installed capacity or is it based somehow on actual production?
It's based on use.
Obviously, extremely different.
So so we can model the usage for the building and figure out how much energy that building will need.
Right.
So then, if if it's over three thousand square feet, you need to match the solar system to ensure you're at net zero energy. So if we calculate, you need a thousand kilowatt hours per year, you've got to match the solar system based on the design parameters, you know, of the available roof area and shading and all those considerations to. I mean, obviously, we don't know until it's actually installed, but we're approximating with with design software to get a close approximate approximation of net zero.
Okay, so you're using some kind of modeling to say, we believe this size solar system will actually, over the course of a year. Produce on average the same amount of this certain amount of energy.
Correct.
Correct, and there's um most most will use the PV watts model developed by NREL to estimate the the solar productivity in our area. So that's that's a pretty standardized process.
Okay. Um, then I wanted to follow up on a couple of the questions that I asked by email. And thank you very much for your very extensive response to my kind of complicated questions, uh which again were a lot of them were coming from my ignorance. But I had this question about the marginal carbon intensity of the electricity that Excel is currently delivering, right? And I realize that that varies by time of day, you know, with the if the wind is blowing and the sun is shining, there might be curtailed. Uh, renewable generation that's available right now. But at other times, if I plug in a one kilowatt load, that additional inner power is going to be coming from coal, right? So do do we have data on that? Really, the question is clearly electrification is the way to go long term. You know, we're going to be moving to that as we electrify the grid. But at this time, by replacing a an efficient natural gas boiler, for example, with a with a heat pump or whatever, with with electrical equipment. Are we actually reducing the carbon emissions?
Yeah, no, and thanks. I think it's a it's a great and it's a very complicated question. I I think I usually tell people, you know, the um heat pump is the the gift that keeps on giving. The electrification is the gift that keeps on giving because our grid is continuously getting cleaner and cleaner over the lifetime of that equipment. But where is it today is is a really good question. I'm sure you you obviously didn't have a chance. Uh, we said that pretty like this afternoon. So I know you wouldn't have had a chance to to look at the study, but um certainly some of our peers and colleagues. Yeah, so there there is a link to a study by Southwest Energy Efficiency Project that um took. The um, it attempted to get at your at your question, which is what is the marginal emissions impact over the fifteen year life of the equipment? Based on the forecasted emissions of of the grid? And everything we see um says that um an electrification solution was on par with a natural gas solution about two to three years ago, based on the grid mix. And so we're already doing better. And with the retirement, um so we'll only have one operating coal unit in Colorado after twenty twenty six. Um, so acknowledging that this is the the twenty twenty four building code. So within a two years, um there will only be um Pablo Unit Three, um sometimes called Comanche. That will still be operational and it's set to retire not later than twenty thirty. So within the lifetime of of the equipment we're installing at this point, um we are are very rapidly, uh not just on par with natural gas appliances, but exceeding it in terms of emissions reduction. Even acknowledging that currently, like if you're needing to heat your home at, say, four o'clock in the morning, um you're dealing with dirty or grid emissions at that point in time. But during the course of the day, we're getting solar resources and wind resources in the winter months, it's already cleaner. And if you take have the opportunity to look at the um heat maps I kind of shared, you can see how those emissions are rapidly reducing in the next um six years. Um, so those are the numbers on that green are emissions, um grid emissions. So to give you a sense of of what's producing at those times, um and definitely happy to dive into it in a lot more detail. I know it's again, it's a really complicated condition. I will just say our analysis continues to show that um we're already um saving emissions um simply by going to electric, even with today's grid mix. Um, even with its diversity um during the hours of the day.
Okay, again, the 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 green um spreadsheet sort of that you included there, that was dealing with the average emission mix, not the marginal.
Um, it is the hourly emissions factor.
So that's not a marginal quantity, right? That's the average mix.
Um, it is, but it's based on hourly, so it's effectively trying to model the marginal um look. So it's not like an average over the month or over the year. It's looking at an hourly basis, so effectively looking at the um grid emissions intensity at those given hours. Based on the the hour of the day and the month of the year. So the twenty four is the twenty four hours, and then it's broken out by months based on what they're consistently seeing as the um total emissions intensity or marginal hourly marginal emissions intensity.
All right, I'll I'll move on to a different question. So thank you for that. Um, that's about the windows. And I had some discussion with an architect who was concerned about this. My understanding is that most of the windows, basically, most of the windows that are available in this country are built at lower elevation, right? And so they achieve high efficiency usually with by filling them with argon. But in order to send them here, they need to essentially puncture that, put in a breathing tube, so all the argon escapes. And so even though they may be rated point two seven or whatever, they don't actually achieve that. Is do you have any information about that?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
I was seeing something on the signature windows, you know, the local window indoor supplier. And they have a a piece about this that says basically, you can't get windows or it's very difficult to get windows that are actually that efficient.
So that's true for very high efficiency windows, particularly some of the European triple pane windows that are imported from Europe. Um, with point two seven double pane windows, those are manufactured locally. Uh, you can buy them at Lowe's and Home Depot right now. They're low cost, builder grade windows. They achieve that at no problem between six to nine thousand feet elevation. When you get beyond that, yeah, you need to start putting breather tubes in them, but we all know Boulder's about what five, six thousand feet. I'm not sure what the exact elevation is here. Josh might have some info on this too. Um, I don't know if you wanted to weigh in, Josh?
Sure. And so, yeah, to your point, yeah, a lot of those windows, you can buy them locally. The other thing we actually did too was um we had some feedback that we actually were looking at doing something similar to what Denver did. Where basically Denver said, well, if if you're going to have more glass in your building over fifteen percent window to wall ratio, you need to do a point two five window. We honestly thought that was too far, kind of to your point, right? You know, the point two seven is in our current code and it's been there for the last three years. We've been building using these windows. And we've we've heard some feedback in terms of that, but we haven't seen um, we haven't seen a ton of issues with it. The other thing too is that you can install a point two seven window across all your windows in a house. Or we have a weighted average where you can kind of take an average of certain windows across the the building. And you can still show compliance as long as that weighted average meets the point two seven requirement. So you could have windows that are point three three, depending on the size of them, maybe a point two six because of it being a smaller window, things of that nature. But they all weighed out and they have to meet that point two seven requirement. We do see some projects that go ahead and install those just for simply, you know, for simplicity and just it's easier just to do that instead of having to do the calculation. But uh, but yeah, we we've heard similar to kind of what you were saying, we've heard that 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 argument as well. And but to Rob's point, you know, you can go into Lowe's and Boulder and actually buy a point two seven window to install in your house, so. Or I think, Rob, you're in Wheat Ridge, right? Sorry, so, but.
Okay, and so when I go to Home Depot and I buy a window that is rated point two seven. It, when I install it here, it actually will achieve point two seven.
Correct, as long as it's a high altitude window, which if you go to Home Depot or Lowe's, that's all they sell. They don't sell windows with breather tubes in them at the local stores.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, I think that is all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Uh, thanks, Laura.
Yeah, I just have one. Thank you. Um, Kurt took one of mine. The other one, uh, is also about materials. So this, I am not an expert in this. I'm way out of my depth, but I really, um, was interested in this question of blown cellulose versus spray foam insulation. And I think the concern here is that if the, the insulation values that are required to be achieved are super high, then the easiest, most cost effective way to do that is with the spray foam in the walls, which has a lot of issues in terms of embodied carbon and in terms of, uh, recyclability of anything that that foam touches, basically can't be recycled uh, in deconstruction. And so, um, is there anything in this update that would encourage people or allow people to use blown cellulose, which is, I understand that actually might have a negative carbon impact because you're embodying that carbon in the cellulose versus the petroleum based foam product?
Yeah, I can take a crack at that. So first of all, one problem with this is we're bound by House Bill thirteen sixty two, I think it was, which is a state bill that we must adopt the minimum standard set forth by the State Energy Code, which is the twenty twenty one I E C C. And unfortunately, prescriptively, when you're talking about a standard two by six wall assemblies, which is what most design professionals and builders are familiar with, if you don't want to use continuous foam on the outside of the building, the only way to meet that, a- as you pointed out, is by using spray foam, you should R thirty cavity, and you can only achieve that with closed cell foam. However, our code, anything over a thousand square feet needs to go through a modeling process. If you model, to Josh's point about the slab edge, you can trade things off. So you could absolutely do, um, cellulose in the walls, which would achieve about an R, R eighteen, R nineteen. In order to do that, you might need to do a slightly higher insulation level in the attic or slightly bit of windows. But it's definitely possible to meet our energy code using entirely cellulose, which, as you pointed out, is a negative embodied carbon product. Um, this is something as we move forward with an embodied carbon code, we hope to address and actually think of a way to incentivize people to use it. Right now, we don't really have a, I don't have a good answer for it. I don't have a way to actually force them to do so because we're, we're sort of limited by state law.
Thank you. It's great to hear that you're thinking about this and that there may be some future steps to actually incentivize the blown cellulose. Thank you so much. It's good to know that trade offs are possible. That was my only question.
Okay, any last clarification questions?
Yeah, I got it. Kurt, I don't know if Kurt has more, but I have, I have a couple more.
Okay.
Um. You're, uh, in the code, in, in the proposed code, you, um, talk about schools, uh, middle, uh, middle schools, high schools, et cetera, you, in turn, in referencing the, uh, I'm, Josh is, maybe he's, he was looking like he was, um, not, anyway, you referenced.
Having an allergy attack.
Okay, all right. I was like, wow, he's like, what is he talking about?
I think he's having an allergy attack.
Sorry, it's not you. I'm, I'm getting over being sick, so that's kind of why I apologize.
All right, I'm, okay, I was like, wow, I thought, I thought I saw that in there. Anyway, um, uh, but the code doesn't, would, this code would only apply to private schools. Is that correct?
Yes, we don't have jurisdiction of the state schools.
Okay. Um, uh, does the code, uh, as, as proposed, uh, both specify, or what, is low carbon concrete and low carbon steel at a state that it meets ASHRA, ISO, some standard that we could say, we, we, we don't want to say a brand or, uh, a, a technology, we want to, we want to specify uh, the use of a standard, and are low carbon steel and concrete at a state where we can uh, require, suggest, incentivize low carbon steel and concrete that is, um, m- meets a, an international standard or a national standard?
Not really, would be my clear answer to that one. To Carolyn's point about us still scoping on embodied carbon, that's, that's a big part of the reason we don't have a firm um, code requirement around that yet. We're still, honestly, the industry is still figuring out how to even measure embodied carbon. The example I like to use, if you have a low embodied carbon um, batch plant, but it's Pueblo, by the time it's trucked to Boulder, is it still low embodied carbon concrete, right? Probably not. So there's still a lot of research to be done around this, this area.
Well, and Rob, to add to that, there's actually only one municipality in the country that has a low, an embodied carbon code, and that's actually, I think, I can't think of the name of it. It's out in California, um, but they literally have a low carbon, uh, a low embodied carbon concrete code. Um, and I can tell you exactly who it is in a second.
I betcha it begins with San.
No, I don't, I think it's Costa. I think it's Costa.
It was a good try, though. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I would, I would agree with what, um, Rob said. I think part of our motivation for including some embodied carbon measures in the points portion, the above code, is to start to gain some of that experience without being prescriptive at this juncture, as in parallel, we, you know, seek to learn more and, and really refine our path forward, so.
Okay, all right, um, the last one. So I, I'm kind of a, I, I have been involved with energy since, uh, I just graduated from CU and got a job selling thermal solar systems. So I actually, you know, it's like, yeah, I, I'm, I'm into this stuff. Um, back when thermal solar systems under Carter were highly incentivized. Um, so, but as I read through this code. Yeah, I totally aged myself. Um, yeah, uh, um, but, uh, so, uh, I, I, I was really interested in reading this, and I was also, but like Laura, uh, I'm way over my head, a lot of this stuff. So my question is, especially for residential contractors, does the city offer, or do you plan to offer, uh, tools, educational resources, seminars, et cetera, for how, how to, how to meet the code? So you don't just have a crowd of angry HVAC contractors, you know, railing against the new onerous, terrible, you know, I can't do my job, I'm going to go out of business sort of thing. So I, I, you know, what would be your response to that?
Yeah, absolutely. We plan to have some trainings on this once we, once we get closer towards the adoption stage. We've already done some outreach with our design professionals. Uh, we had a meeting, Chamber of Commerce last week, and prior to that, I think it was in November last year, we met with a large group of architects and engineers and discussed their concerns. Um, to your point, yeah, that's probably the next stage of the outreach is actually getting down to the level of HVAC contractors. They're probably going to be some of the, uh, more affected stakeholders in this. I think our high level designers are already pretty comfortable. Honestly, most of the large homes we're seeing in Boulder would already comply with this code. They're already doing this stuff. Um, I think Carolyn mentioned earlier, Boulder Housing Partners is already doing all electric. So a lot of these things that we're proposing are already being done by people that are willing to push the envelope anyways. They're not necessarily new ideas within the city.
Okay, that, that, go ahead.
I was just saying, the only thing I would add to Rob is, um, we're also very closely following some of our, our partners and their learnings in Boulder County. Um, yeah, I think if you've been following, um, the Marshall rebuild, um, there was a lot of work to, to support um, the reconstruction around all electric and, and high efficiency heat pump adoption. Um, so we also intend to bring a lot of those lessons learned, um, to share with, with our architectural community as well around, um, you know, where they've seen some of the opportunities. Um, so for sure, it is, we certainly, um, learned in twenty seventeen, when we first adopted the net zero code, we saw some unintended outcomes, um, in the, in the way architects approach it, the, um, switch over to an electric heating solution. We did a lot of outreach at that time and just haven't seen a lot of those issues surface, um, but definitely want to learn from that and, and carry that forward with training and support.
I'll, I'll just conclude by saying, I, I was really impressed as I read through the comments, the table of comments, other than one, uh, both the quality of the comments and your appreciation and incorporation of a lot of that. Anyway, I thought that, as I read through that, I thought that was exemplary. So.
Thank you. Yeah.
Uh, ML, you have your hand up?
I do. Sarah, do you have, um, questions before I go for my second round?
I do not.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for asking.
Um, so, um, I, the, two follow ups. We were talking about the grid and, um, how Excel will deal with this electric push. So I'm wondering, uh, and I don't know that I saw it in the, in the code updates. Um, is there a, um, sort of companion component to onsite renewables that would include batteries? I mean, that kind of starts to mitigate the impact to the grid.
Josh, did you want to say that?
So, yeah, we've actually included, um, so with our, with our R four oh, R four oh eight and C four oh six, the additional conservation requirements, what we've done is we've actually started awarding points for using that and kind of looking to, to move in that direction because as we've learned and we know, and, and you probably, you, you'll probably hopefully agree with this as well, but when you partner solar with batteries, that's really your best payback, right?
Right.
And so that's really kind of what it, it, so another piece that I didn't really mention in this, but we also have a, uh, a requirement in the commercial section for electric, what is it? A battery storage ready space? That's required in, in the mechanical room. So to, to your point, to kind of look at future proofing and make sure that there is available space ready for batteries, um, in case that's the next step that the building owner wants to do. Um, for these new projects, if they want to go that route, um, they're already going to be having to do solar onsite. It would make sense from a commercial standpoint, like you mentioned, to consider battery storage as one of your options really to, to achieve compliance with the energy code, I think. That being said, we didn't want to require it, um, at least at this stage yet. And so that's why with these options, with these additional conservation measures, it's a way to really kind of start dipping our toe in the water because now that it's in code, the next step we can do is, well, let's move from an additional measure and make it a mandatory. Why not? And so that's kind of where our starting point really is, is to get it kind of codified. And then the next step would be looking at, um, using, you know, possibly mandating it in one of the next cycles, so.
Um, yeah, because I think a lot of the people that, um, push back on electrification are, uh, speaking to, um, some of the issues with the grid and, um, how the grid may not be able to handle all the additional electric needs. Um, the other thing with, um, the battery component, the storage onsite, uh, you know, the biggest producer, uh, maybe the only producer is the Tesla ones, and they include the inverter. And when you put a PV system up without a battery, you get an inverter. So, uh, uh, there are some, um, cost inefficiencies there with not having a, um, sort of co-coinstallation between the two. There's a reciprocity there that could be, uh, I guess, highlighted.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, another question that I just wanted to do some follow up on, you talked about the, um, embodied carbon, and my question around that was like concrete and I don't, there, there were, I, I don't know how many you had with embodied carbon um, requirements, but they all had Xs. So what, right, X percent? So what's, what's that?
So, thank you for actually mentioning that. Um, so what that is, is if you look at the table in that section, there's percentages that, that have points under them, depending on, uh, what route you're taking. And so for the embodied carbon piece, say you're looking at um, embodied carbon and insulation, and you're able to do a fifty percent reduction, right, from the baseline there? You could take points, I think it's three points in that table. If you go to the table that's in, uh, say, R four oh six, and look at that, that X is to correspond with what percentage that you're achieving above that table. And so that's kind of why. Yeah, it's basically in there. But it, but it gives the option of not just saying, well, you have to do a fifty percent reduction, but it's like, well, you can do fifty percent or twenty five or ten percent, and you get some type of points for doing it. But it's kind of to your point, we want to kind of incentivize people to start looking at that, even if it's ten percent at the beginning, but hopefully they do some other options that are at fifty percent, so.
Right. So getting it on the table.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, perfect. Um, so I'm going to cite some specific ones and the questions associated with them. Um, I'm looking at the existing buildings, C five oh two additions. Um, C five oh two dot one, one and two, they set a monetary value of five hundred thousand to trigger one compliance or another.
Yes.
And what I'm, my question is, is a monetary threshold valid anymore? I mean, cost of things are pretty volatile. Um, so I'm just curious as to that being a dollar amount being a threshold versus, um, some other, uh, datum, like square footage or, or, or something. It, I mean, just look at the market in the last, right, handful of years, and five hundred thousand dollars two years ago met something very different than what it means today.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak a little bit about, um, how we landed at that number originally, um, which, um, doesn't answer your question about, is it the right number now? Um, it used to be a, um, a percent of assessed value number, which was particularly, um, problematic. Um, we saw a lot of wide variability. And so at the time, so this was going into the twenty twenty code, um, Josh's predecessor, um, did a lot of engagement around, um, you know, reviewing project sizes and the, the types of scope and landed at that five hundred thousand dollar number at that time, um, which is kind of carried forward. Um, to your point, certainly when it's volatile, that can trigger projects in or not. Um, I think we struggle a little bit to, um, Mark's earlier question around trying to get into square footage and some of those complexities of, like what are the other things that might trigger? So it seemed like a reasonable number at the time. Um, it's certainly something we can continue to monitor and, and revisit as we go forward.
Yeah, okay, I, I guess it's a challenge. Um, so let me see. One more question. Uh, in the residential energy efficiency, R four oh six table, the table four oh six dot three, so new construction that's greater than or equal to three thousand square feet without onsite renewables has an E R I of fifty, and that's the same as a small house. Why wouldn't, um, the number will be smaller, just like, you know, one over on the, um, with site renewables, where there is a difference between big houses and small houses? Why don't we have a higher requirement for big houses?
So I would say, I, I would, I would actually say that we, we do still have a higher requirement for big houses. So what it is, is basically what we're trying to do is outside of the houses that are less than a thousand square feet, unless they decide to go ahead and model anyways, they all need to hit an E R I of fifty. And the reason we've looked at that, we've kind of done some math and backed off to kind of see, you know, where this would be. Um, the international code, actually, I believe, um, the twenty twenty one I E C C, I think actually has the target, I believe about a fifty, I think it is, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it's a fifty, yeah, it's a fifty, and then the R C, um.
The appendix, yeah.
Appendix is a forty seven.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And so, so with that being said, with the smaller homes, it's got the same requirement of that pre-solar requirement, but on the backend, they're also now required to install some portion of solar to get them to an E R I of, of thirty. So, um, so it's, it's, it's not, it's a similar, I would say it's similar to what we currently have versus the current code, basically as it sits, as you know. Um, if you're less than three thousand square feet, it's on a sliding scale to, to get you kind of down, um, for your E R I target. What we did is we took a step back and we wanted to just kind of go across the board and make sure that everything could hit an E R I of fifty before throwing solar on, which there's some hills to, that'll have to be climbed there just for folks that aren't used to doing that. Um, and then you can put solar on. And so with the homes that are greater than three thousand square feet that are already doing all electric, this really won't impact them. With homes that are less than, that are doing all electric, the impact's going to be now that they're having to put some portion of solar on there. And so that's kind of why we were coming up with that understanding is, um, instead of constantly going down and saying they have to meet a lower requirement, what we wanted to do is put efficiency before renewables and then make sure that, um, there's installing some portion of solar in order to get us down to net zero requirement of twenty thirty.
So it's a jumping stone.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
So.
I appreciate that, you know. I mean, you've done that throughout the code. You're, you're looking at, okay, we can't just sort of get there.
Exactly. We're trying, we're trying to be thoughtful.
Have a path.
So, yeah, it's, it comes down to thoughtful design, really, so.
Yeah, and another thing we, we figured out, we did some modeling on this, is it gets really cost prohibitive once you get below an E R I of fifty without solar. I mean, it, you're really in the, about embodied carbon and having to put more foam on the building. We don't want to get to the point where people are putting a ton of spray foam in a building to achieve an E R I of forty or something without solar.
Right. Great answer. Thank you so much for that. Um, no, I think those are, uh, no, I do have one more question, and it's in the, um, commercial, commercial energy efficiency. I am looking at, uh, Commercial energy efficiency, I am looking at, uh, page one twenty-seven. And it's where the adjustment for unusually cold years. Um, it's actually in the, I'm now looking at the actual code. Uh, so adjustment for other factors, the chief building official may adjust the assigned EUI target for conditions other than those identified in this section if the chief building official finds the conditions represent reasonable changes, impacting the building use characteristics that were not anticipated. So I guess two questions, is all this new? And if not, what's an example of that?
I think, Josh, is this the section for the voluntary pathway to go for an outcome verified code pathway?
I, I think so. What's, do you know what section it is in the code instead of the page number?
It, it's, I'm pretty sure it is, um.
Four oh seven dot three.
And, and assuming I'm accurate.
Top three, yeah.
Yeah, assuming I'm accurate, um, in twenty twenty, we introduced this section with the idea that, um, we would offer some flexibility. If somebody wanted to model a different outcome and prove that they could achieve it once constructed. We haven't had anybody go through this pathway.
Okay, that was my question.
But the idea is that, um, you know, let's just say they set an ERI, sorry, an EUI of thirty-six for their commercial office building. Um, and they have, uh, to demonstrate a year from completion of construction that they hit that number. If they didn't hit it, the, the way it was structured is they would have to invest, um, up to a certain amount to try and get back to that thirty-six. But if the year where they were measuring it was abnormal, then we could compensate for that. Um, again, we haven't had anybody go through this. I think we just chose to retain it, um, for that flexibility within the code, but that's the concept behind it. So, yeah.
So that was, that was my follow-up question, was the procedure for non-compliance? And it sounds like you don't have one, so you've never gone through.
Yeah, I mean, the, the compliance is we hold a deposit, um, for them based on, um, the formula, which is, it's, it's in the, um, it's established some, in there.
I'm seeing, yeah.
They would, they would have to invest up to that amount and not more. Um, so the intent was not that we would fine or penalize them, but it was in trying to drive people towards, um, you know, kind of an out time that they're outcome verified code. At one point, I think we'd envisioned actually requiring that of everybody. Um, I'll be back speaking with you, um, and city council in the coming year about, um, updates to our building performance requirements, where I think we actually want to get at the outcome verified performance, um, through different means than, than the time of construction code, which is what the energy code is. So definitely more to come around that. Again, we retain that section in, in the code for the time being.
Well, and, oh, go ahead. I was gonna say to provide that flexibility, if someone wants to go that pathway, we'd be definitely open to it. But I think a lot of the thing is, is that kind of to, to Carolyn's point is, we haven't seen a lot of them go that way because you have to model it to know how the building's going to perform. And when you model it, you can use that model for compliance. Instead of going, I want to wait two years and see how we perform. And then it's kind of, well, how do you enforce that with a permit being open for that long and so on? But that being said, I will say this, if we had projects that were interested in that, we'd be definitely open for them wanting to come in and come through. And so we, to your point, we haven't seen anything yet, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would involve a commissioning component.
Yes, well, and most buildings, it just depends on the size of the equipment and it will, will require commissioning of some level. And with most, with all commercial projects, it requires at the minimum lighting, uh, lighting control functional testing, which is commissioning, so.
Yep.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your answers.
Thanks for the questions.
Thanks, ML. And Kurt, you have your hand up. I just want to make sure you're asking a clarifying question, um, uh, versus a, I'm really curious about this question.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Um, so I'm following up on the questions about the additional conservation credits. Uh, uh, there was some discussion, I think from Mark about the embodied energy in concrete, the embodied carbon in concrete. And what I was hearing from in response to, to that is we don't really have a good way of measuring embodied carbon in concrete and yet we're, uh, we're issuing credits based on that. So how does that work?
So, I, I can, I can kind of chime in and hopefully answer this. Um, so there are standards that are out there. The one that we referenced actually that we're using in the code is the NBI standard that Rob mentioned. That's, it's actually an overlay that NBI, uh, the, the New Buildings Institute actually helped develop. Um, there's other, there's other, um, there's other firms out there that are working with other ones. I know that the civil engineers have a, have their own document, they're coming up with an ASME or AS, ASME standard, excuse me. Um, and then also I know that I believe our consultants actually are working with Ashray to hopefully have a standard by May as well. So there's a lot of different options. We're trying to keep kind of the, the, the pipeline open in case, um, we see something that really fits what we're looking for. Plus, what we're looking for is with these standards, they, they've got to have alignment, right, at some point. And so that's kind of what we're, we're really looking at. Plus to this, this being kind of the new frontier on things. Um, we, there's just not a ton out there that, that currently is out there. I can tell you that, um, Title twenty-four in California just recently updated to their twenty-one or twenty-two last year, and they just now include a requirement for a whole, uh, whole building lifecycle assessment. Which basically factors into the embodied carbon of the, of the building as well. And so that's a brand new thing that was introduced out there. That's something we're also looking to incentivize here as well to, to have people start going down that path and learning more about kind of embodied carbon and what they can really do to, to reduce our impacts on it. Um, I don't know if that answered your question and I apologize if it didn't.
I can take a crack at that too, so, um, yeah, there isn't really an industry-wide standard yet. As Josh alluded to, there's some in development. And this is not a requirement, this is an optional official credit, additional credits package. So we want to be allowing, you know, looking forward to the future for things that are available. And saying that, there are some companies, like one I've seen right here in Boulder already, there's a company called Carbon Cure, which makes low embodied carbon. But that's a brand, that's not an industry standard. So we could use that for this additional efficiency measure, but we couldn't require it as a prescriptive measure because there's only one company that I know of in the front range right now offering this product.
And just to clarify that, the, uh, these are, these are additional credits, but you have to achieve a certain ten, ten credits or something, right?
Correct.
You, they're sort of optional, which, which you choose is optional, but you need to choose some.
Right, maybe a way to say it is we're assigning credit based on what's, the, what we currently know and believe to be, um, the, the carbon reductions associated with those credits. I think what we're, we're saying that to require those standards be met by all projects as a mandatory requirement. We are somewhat concerned about because it hasn't fully been vetted and proven. So I think we're willing to acknowledge that there's a little bit of risk that they're not going to achieve the emissions reductions that we've attributed to them with the scoring system. Um, but we're, we're trying to introduce them to start to get usage of them so that we can then inform future updates where we may make them more prescriptive.
Right, and I understand that part. I guess my question is, how are you measuring? If someone comes to you and says, I'm building this building and the foundation is built with low embodied carbon concrete, how will you verify whether that's correct or not?
So we'll ask for the environmental product disclosure for that product, which, as I said, right now, I'm only aware of one that can even offer us that, which is Carbon Cure right now. Hopefully there'll be twenty by the end of the year. I can't promise that though. So we do have, we do have a way to measure it, it's just in its infancy right now. Um, and that's, that's a very valid point to come back, loop back to the embodied carbon debate. That's kind of the biggest problem with having an embodied carbon code right now is the question you just posed to me. How do we actually operationally measure it? How do we enforce this in the field? I mean, as an inspector, when I go out and inspect a foundation, I have no way of knowing what kind of concrete it is. There's going to be an element of trust there, right? If they tell me they're using Carbon Cure and they have a receipt from Carbon Cure, that's about the best I can do.
Okay, great. And then one other point regarding this section in R four oh eight twenty-two battery storage. It says the battery has to provide minimum power debate, demand to run the HVAC system refrigerator in two lots. So that showed, that talks about the power rating, but not the energy storage. I'm not seeing anything about the actual energy storage and for the batteries.
I think, I think what you're trying to get at is, um, like, is it a, like a three KW battery versus does it deliver X kilowatt hours of energy?
It's energy versus power, right? Kilowatts is, is power. The question is presumably it's rated based on power, but also energy storage. But I don't see anything about the energy storage here. Cause you could say, oh, you know, it, it delivers the necessary power, but only for three minutes or whatever.
Very good point.
And I think, so, sorry, apologies on this. It's been a second with this, this, this actually requirement. But I believe that, that also with the references to the NEC and the IRC, um, there may be, that, that may have been where we actually had it in there, if I remember correctly. Um, but we can, let me loop back on that.
Yeah, let's, let's take that as a clarifying one because there's, there's more behind it. Um, catching us in a moment where we're like, wait, I don't remember, um, what that reference exactly says. But it's, it's, it's more than a minute, um, of those loads, for sure, within the standard.
Okay, sounds great. Um, something to look at. And then the final one was a follow-up, uh, again, on my question about the, the move away from, uh, yeah. Towards onsite solar and away from the offsite solar and about the EROI of onsite solar. And I didn't really see a response about that. I mean, my understanding is the EROI of onsite solar almost invariably is lower than that of utility scale solar, right? If it were higher, then the utility companies would be coming out knocking on everybody's door, asking to put solar panels on their roofs. They're not. And so how, how is that, why really are we pushing, moving towards this onsite requirement? I, I understand that the renewable energy credits are kind of hard to administrate. Is that really the motivation?
Um, yeah, so maybe, uh, like, looking back at history, um, so we have a few motivators for doing local generation. Early in our, our ventures and when we first started requiring, um, solar ready zones and solar into code, which has been in place in Boulder for, I think we've been requiring solar on, on various projects for, for several code cycles at this juncture. Um, was acknowledging that the grid was far from the trajectory it's on today, right? So at that time, there was no pathway to even fifty percent renewables, much less the eighty percent we're going to see, um, this decade. So that was the original genesis of local generation. But there's other values that local generation supports, um, that have been formed, continuing to require it to include energy affordability, um, because it does provide, um, it pays for itself over the lifetime of the building, um, certainly much less than the lifetime of the building in the system. Um, when you're doing it at, at time of construction, it, through net metering credits, it lowers costs, creates local jobs. Um, we know that distributed resources are valued by the utility, um, by providing generation closer to where the loads are. Um, so it's not, it's not just about the emissions reduction. Cause I agree with you, the more local generation we put in place, the lower the value of the greenhouse gas reduction that that distributed generation causes, because at some point, the, when the system overgenerates, it's our local generation that won't be curtailed, it's the utility assets that will be curtailed, right? And so it does have a diminishing value. We did not want to take a step back, um, with this code in terms of the other goals and other values that the community has kind of put behind local generation goals, um, fully acknowledging that we certainly don't want to impose requirements that neither provide cost benefit, local economic development, distributed generation benefits, such as renewable energy credits. Those have no meaningful emissions value to them in, in our opinion. And that's why we took those requirements out of this code. We don't want to drive people to spend money for a solar garden subscription that isn't providing incremental emissions reduction and, and doesn't create local generation for us. So that's, that's the intent behind what you're seeing, acknowledging that we didn't want to take a step back and say, no, you know, we require all the homes we've built in the last ten years put solar on. But today is no longer required. There's other values that that solar still delivers and we want to, we want to maintain those at this juncture.
Can I also add this?
Saying, i- i- if I understand it is, there's not really a verifiable way of guaranteeing that we're, if, if we're asking for offsite general, carbon free generation, that it's, we're creating a net carbon reduction.
Correct, correct, um, which is, which is different than, you know, when we talk about grid emissions, right? But when we're talking about a subscription or a rack, um, I, I could go on for hours about, um, why those do not contribute emissions reduction. And I'd much rather put our local solar on rooftops here, um, which actually do still contribute. It's just, it's a diminishing value, but it's still very much a value.
Thank you.
Y'all done, Kurt? Okay, excellent. Yes, go ahead. Um, I have one question about how this relates to zoning, which is a different question. Do you want me to ask it now or hold it until after we go through commenting on the COBEC?
Uh, is it relevant to what you're going to suggest as an addition to the ordinance? Or is it a question with, is it a question that has to do with, you're curious about something that is a future issue?
It is, is about how this might tie to future zoning, uh, changes.
Uh, Brad? Uh, just, we have a question about how this might tie to future zoning changes.
Yeah, can I just really quickly?
Yeah, yeah, why don't you elaborate?
Yeah, so, um, my understanding is, like, we talked about the, that doing spray foam insulation is not as good as putting, uh, exterior in, uh, exterior insulation on the building for various reasons. The spray foam in the walls is, is less good. Um, but my understanding is that sometimes zoning code gets in the wave. Like if you put exterior insulation on the building, that counts against your FAR. And sometimes it can conflict with setbacks on buildings. And so if somebody's trying to modify their building to put on exterior insulation, that can be discouraged by our zoning code.
Yeah.
Um, so I was just curious if that is something that's coming, if, if there's thought to trying to make that easier for folks to put on the exterior insulation.
Yeah, uh, I, you know, I can't say it's coming because that's what we need to explore, all those things. So we are, um, you know, preliminarily aware of those kind of interplays. Um, I think as, uh, Josh and Rob and Caroline have, have represented, we're really just dipping our toe into the embodied energy with, uh, the energy code or embodied carbon with the energy code. Um, there are a lot of questions around the embodied energy and, and that is one of them, is the interplay with the, um, zoning code potentially, the interplay with, uh, other building codes, uh, interplay with, uh, implementation. Rob spoke to the measurement, so, uh, you know, probably is the answer. But that's, that's why this is going to be a comprehensive look at all those things and it's, uh, it's not going to be easy. We're going to be, we're going to be spending a lot of time doing some kind of, uh, tip of the spear thinking on this one.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your indulgence, Sarah.
Oh no, I just think, all right, um, we are six minutes past the amount of time I'd hoped we'd get this done with. And we haven't yet gotten to public comment. Uh, Thomas, do we have anyone who wants to make public comment? Okay, why don't you ask for, see, if folks have, if anyone online has a comment they want to make in public comments on this, please raise your hand now. Still nobody?
Still nobody.
Excellent. Okay, then we will move on now to, uh, our discussion. Um, Josh, would you mind putting up the questions that you have? Actually, you know what? We all have the questions in front of us. Put up the, the motion that you want us to make, that you're proposing. Um, and is it possible to do that where we can still see Kurt and ML? That's up to you.
I don't, I don't know any way to do that.
You don't? Okay, then do not bother to put up the motion because we want to see Kurt and ML. Um, all right, so the, uh, Josh has put out for us three questions, um, which will, I guess, guide our conversation. The first is, does planning board support the twenty twenty-four COBEC as drafted? Um, and Kurt, since you started with the most questions, we'll start with you. Your thoughts?
Uh, yes, overall, um, well, I think this is, so this is sort of related to number three, right? Um, it seems like kind of getting at the same question. But overall, I do, I think the tremendous amount of great work has gone into this. Great work has gone into this. I really appreciate all the detailed analysis. That staff has done. Um, I do have one potential. Um, in or suggested amendment or additional motion or something, but overall the answer is yes.
All right, uh, ML. ML, it's uh, do you support the twenty twenty four Quebec as drafted?
Um. Is this the ordinance? It's at the end of the um, packet for us?
Yes.
So there is that chapter thirty six, which is about um, waste recycling. That we didn't, wasn't really included in your presentation and we didn't really talk about it. I have some. Uh, thoughts. About. About that one. So. I'm not sure where, how.
Are they thoughts that you would like to present in a amendment to the motion? Or are they questions that you have for staff?
I think they would start out as questions.
Okay, um. If you don't mind, I'm going to finish going around the horn on just this first question, then we'll come back to your questions about chapter thirty six. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mark.
In answer to question number one, the answer is yes with. Yeah, am I?
Just couldn't.
Okay, uh, the, the answer to the question in number one is yes with, I, I will make a. A proposed modification and I'd like to take just a second and make a suggestion for. When we get to the motion making. I'm going to suggest that we. Uh, take the main motion and rather than go through amendments and voting on amendments that we. Uh, take a vote on the main motion and then have additional motions. That we record the vote up or down and the vote count. Uh, outside of that main motion, because I think the main motion in this case, the code and supporting the code. Is worthy of just a, a clean vote on that and, and rather than. I'm amending and then I'm amending your amendment. Did we just do that? That's my suggestion.
Okay, uh, just thumbs up or thumbs down on Mark's suggestion as a process? Thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up. Great, okay. Thank you. Your thoughts?
Uh, yes, I support the twenty twenty four Quebec as drafted. I really appreciate all the work that staff have put into this. It's clear that you've thought about it very deeply. At a detailed level that is way beyond anything that I could absorb right now. Um, a- and I appreciate the approach that you've taken with. What do we know and feel confident about that we can mandate or prescribe? And what are some things that we want to experiment with and learn more about? I think that's a wonderful approach to take, um, and I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, so ML, let's come back to you and the questions that you have. And if I might. Ask both Kurt and Mark and Laura if you're going to offer alternative or additional motions to go ahead and start drafting them now. And send them off to uh, Thomas when you have them drafted. And in the meantime, we'll go through ML's questions about the waste question.
Thank you. Um. Uh, so. The general question. I am wondering about um, in chapter thirty six. You use both the word um, demolition and deconstruction. Do they have two different meanings? Because implied, I mean, they have implied different meanings, but I'm just uh, wondering why we have demolition at all. Aren't we encouraging deconstruction?
Carolyn, you looked like you were nodding your head. Um, do you want to answer that?
Well, I'm gonna let Rob answer it, but I mean, you're correct that they have different meanings. I would, I mean. You know, de- deconstruction is, is the physical dismantling. Um, I mean, my understanding and, and this is not my, I'm the energy person, not the. Um, circular economy person, but acknowledging that um, not everything gets fully deconstructed um, is, is the intent behind including both words there. So you're shaking your head now, Rob, so did I get that right?
Yeah, no, I, I largely agree with you on that. Um, so demolition. In this context is typically around additions and alterations on small homes where it's. Maybe not economically feasible or often in Boulder with historic buildings, a lot of the time we run into materials that are contaminated with asbestos and lead. And deconstruction just isn't possible in small residential alterations. The other thing I'll comment on is we've noticed is a real equity issue with people um, in terms of trying to deconstruct things and holding up certificates of occupancy because contractors have a really hard time tracking this. And countless times since I've been here, CEOs have been held up for weeks at a time because of our deconstruction waste ordinance. We want to be able to. Consider it as that, that we want people to deconstruct as much as possible, but we also want housing. So we don't want to hold it up for, you know. Don't let perfection get in the way of good, right?
So, um. I guess I a- am not, uh. I'm concerned that the process, there are like Boulder County, for example, has a pretty. Uh, high. Um, bar for deconstruction. Um, so it, I, I'm, I'm not sure that the um, equity. Issue is out, outweighs the environmental. Impact of demolition. Um, and the uh. Values and goals. Um, I mean, when you see. Old lumber getting tipped into dumpsters again and again and again and again. That's so easy. We've got resource here in town. So a- anyway, so my question. Um, is. Can? Um. So demolition i- i- is a, is a process that is generally used for concrete and masonry. Those get, you know, broken down and, and usually recycled. Um, everything else is deconstructed, you know, wood things and, and steel things that they're de-citing. Every project I've worked on that has. Had an existing structure has been deconstructed and all my projects are tiny. So it, it, it does happen. It is real. We have facilities to do it, great people doing deconstruction, and of course we have resource as a place to take a lot of our. Um, materials too. So the questions that come up for me are. If our language um. Encourages people to think by using. Demolition rather than deconstruction and only use demolition in the precise. Places where it, it, it would be, it's the only choice. Um. You've got to start by giving people the language so that they can even begin thinking this way. Most people automatically say, well, I'm going to demolish. And you're like, well, aren't you going to save the windows or save the wood or? Um, so it's a mindset, I think, that is set up in this chapter thirty six. That I find, um, I think we could do better. Um, and the other, the other uh, question I have about it or concern I have. Is under diversion requirements, it talks about seventy five percent of waste tonnage. So that's weight. Right? That's weight. And yet. You talk about three, at least three material pipes. And you talk about volume options. So I. Wonder how you accommodate, which is why all you ever see getting recycled is concrete. That's why we get the outcomes we get is because of, of the language that people see. And they say, well, I'm going to, you know. Recycle seventy five percent of my concrete. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, so, so we already require tracking of this. So if you're demolishing an existing structure or, or deconstruct, you are required to deconstruct it and you are required to meet that. You're required to submit a spreadsheet with the receipts, tracking the tonnage or the volume to um, climate initiatives. Now, that's not my department or division or anything, but I'm. Somewhat familiar with what they do. So that is already required in, in Boulder's code. Where the demolition aspect comes in is when we're talking like a small alteration. We don't want to discourage a homeowner from putting an addition on an existing home or anything like that. So it's viewed as being a. Maybe an unnecessary complexity and unnecessary expense, but all you want to do is tear out, say, two hundred square feet of wall. We don't want to make them deconstruct that and track it. For, for a very small environmental gain. But if they're demolishing an entire structure, absolutely, that's required right now that they deconstruct and track that waste.
So that would be my set, my next set of questions because I. I, I mean, I'm a, I'm a practicing architect in the city of Boulder and I have a sense of what goes on in a lot of places. Um. I'm curious as to how many projects forfeit their deposit um, and, and bypass. The deconstruction requirement.
Often they can't because we won't issue them a CR if they don't comply with that requirement.
And is forfeiting their deposit an option?
What's that, sorry?
Um, yeah, um, I think that would be something, um, we certainly track that, um, ML, and I, I know it's, it's not, the number's not zero. Um, right? So we do have some forfeitures. I think the one thing, and again, I'm really realizing we're not the subject matter experts explicitly on this. But I know that our, my colleagues um, in our circular economy team have been doing some working group sessions um, with um. Builders in the community to, to better understand where the successes are, where the barriers are. And it's my understanding, and, and I don't know, Rob, if you recall this or Brad recalls this, I believe the intent is they are going to come um, back. Or, or go to council later this year for updates um, to the specific requirements around deconstruction. Um, they just were not ready in time for our energy code update. So I do know that the city. In working project right now, I just um, don't have enough knowledge to give you the explicit answers. I do know that there have been some um, who have forfeited their deposits um, and. In full.
So we've never had a chapter thirty six in our energy code? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, it's been there. This is the same chapter that's um, that was in the previous.
Oh, okay. So this said a new chapter thirty six is added to read. And.
Yeah, it was in the twenty twenty Quebec as well. It should probably have been amended to not say new chapter.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we introduced it um, in the twenty twenty um, code. Acknowledging that um. There's, there were definitely some learnings um, very much to your point, and I know that that's what the team is working towards.
Right, and I guess I would encourage, um, I would encourage the, the language to be um. Mm, more directive of the thinking, right? Uh, right now, people think it's a demolition permit because it's called a demolition permit. So they're not thinking they're. Going to have to deconstruct much of anything. Um, so I. That's. As in the energy code itself, you're talking about jumping stones and how people, you know, how we begin to. Um, normalize and standardize this way of thinking and doing things. I, I think that this um, waste recycling piece. Uh. Is, is not as um, as. Uh, direct as it could be. There's a lot of waste that comes off of. Um, I, I'm horrified when I go to job sites and I see what goes on. You know, there's a lot of stuff that is not being um. Processed. As we think it is. And I'm not sure how to close the gaps. I think one is, you know, just start getting people used to thinking that, hey, we're deconstructing. You know, we're reusing, we're recycling, we're repurposing, we're not tipping things into dumpsters.
And ML, if I can just kind of respond to that in general, then is we, we appreciate that feedback and those have been. Conversations that I've heard internally as well. We recognize again. That this is really one step towards uh, those larger kind of cultural shifts and language shifts and, and uh, you can be sure that. As part of the embodied karmic um, project, because it's a project. These are the types of things we'll look at. One of the challenges with demolition permits is that they, you know, come through the state and that's what the state calls it. So.
Right.
You know, I mean, we're, we're kind of working within the framework that exists culturally right now, but. Uh, but we recognize uh, all the things you're saying and um, words do matter and we'll, we'll continue leaning into that. I don't know that there's a. Um, editor change that we could suggest tonight for, for the energy code, but we appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Uh, Josh, what did you want to add?
I was just going to add to that, uh, kind of to what Rob said, you know, earlier on, uh. With, with the deconstruction requirements. So the update really there was, we were seeing a lot of issues with projects coming up for CO at the end of them and. Um, having to scramble to compile all this information. And so the update there was really to, to get way ahead of that and after rough. Ask for the information then. That way, if there's any questions, any issues, you get it ironed out right at rough. By the time you get it final, everything's nice and nice little package, we can review it, stamp it, approve it and move on. And so that was kind of the intent there is to kind of start getting out ahead of these issues and start um, working with the, the contractors closer to really understand those requirements. You know, you maybe have a mulligan at the beginning and it, it doesn't comply, but here's all the correct documents. So by the time we're at final, um, there's nothing really there to hopefully hold up. For CO and we can kind of move ahead and kind of really streamline the process more. And then I, I just wanted to ask something for clarification, just because I know I haven't been at the city much. And we keep on saying that this is part of the energy code. This is part of the ordinance for the energy code, and this was in the old ordinance for the old energy code. It's actually not part of the energy code. And please, please correct me if I'm wrong with that at all. So, okay.
Go ahead.
You are correct, Josh. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was going to address that too. Um, we made, that's included in the ordinance that adopts, was intended to adopt the energy code.
Right.
Because there were some references to the old energy code. Um. So we, we did a little cleanup, but the substantive part of the ordinance wasn't really part of the scope of work. Of, of that demolition ordinance, I guess.
So I should stop asking questions?
Maybe just we'll ask them at a later date.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, Brad, I appreciate your update on um, the conversation. I think it's an important one and I'm um, very appreciative that the uh, department is. Um. Looking into the shortcomings of the way we um, deconstruct in our city.
Okay, great. Um, all right, so uh, we'll go to question, I'm going to. Eliminate question number three because it's the same as question number one. Uh, question number two, does planning board support the allowance of natural gas water heating for affordable multifamily projects on a case by case basis? Is there anyone who is uncomfortable with that? All right. All right, so are there any comments folks want to make before we go to motion making? Okay, great. Uh, I do need you to pull up the actual motion, please.
Do we need the original motion language as well? Or just the additional ones that were sent?
Let's start with the original motion. We'll vote on that and then we'll go to the other motions. So just pull up the original motion first because that's what we.
Okay, um, Josh, could you send that over to me, please?
You, I can share it if you want me to.
Okay, if you just could share it, that'd be perfect.
That's the way to go. Thank you.
Amen. And so what, I'm going to, I'm going to show it from the actual memo because it differs a little bit from what is in the actual um, the presentation, just for simplicity purposes, so. But here's the actual memo for uh, the motion.
Uh, all right, so uh, we are, uh, uh, this would be a motion to recommend the city council the adoption of the twenty twenty four city of Boulder energy conservation code. By way of the ordinance drafted in attachment B of this memo.
So moved.
Wait, I wasn't making, I wasn't making the motion. I was reading the motion. Um, I just want to make sure, um, Hella, that that is appropriate language. It references an attachment. I just want to make sure that's, I don't remember us doing that recently.
Yeah, I think you can reference the attachment to the staff memo. Um. I, I would just say the staff memo instead of this memo.
All right, so uh, would someone like to make the motion with that addition?
I will make that motion.
Please make the motion.
I move that planning board recommends to city council the adoption of the twenty twenty four city of Boulder. Energy conservation code by way of the ordinance drafted in attachment B of the staff memo.
I'll second that.
Okay, ML seconded it, sorry. All right, uh, so I will read it again one more time, then we'll vote motion to recommend to city council. All right, uh, so I will read it again one more time, then we'll vote motion to recommend to city council adoption of the twenty twenty-four City of Boulder Energy Conservation Code by way of the ordinance drafted in attachment B of the staff memo. Laura?
Yes.
Sarah is an I. Mark?
Aye.
M L?
Yes.
And, uh, Kurt, we, we can't see you. Okay, that was a yes from Kurt. All right, so the motion has been adopted. Now let's bring up the other two motions. Proposed motions. Uh, so, uh, uh, Josh, you have to take down your, thank you.
Not a problem. Sorry.
Oh, thanks. I appreciate that. Okay, um, uh, Mark. Can you please make your motion?
I move that planning board recommended council in regard to the twenty twenty-four C O B E C C that council directs staff to, and I, I, only reason I put the triple dot there was if anyone else is making a motion that, uh, they wanted to incorporate, use that first part of the sentence. So that was just by way of clarification. That council directs staff to incorporate a change of the definition of electric vehicles to include e-bikes and other micro mobility options.
I'll second that, Mark.
Okay. Uh, any comments, questions?
I have a question.
Okay. Whoa.
I just want to ask staff, would there be any unintended negative consequences of doing it this way? Or would you propose a different way to do it? Like, how do you? I think Mark's intention is clear and I just want to make sure that we're not going to accidentally introduce some complications.
No, I think you're just asking for a, a definition change, which on the face of it, that's, that should be a simple thing for us to accomplish. And in terms of actually implementation, I still stand by, I think that's probably belongs in the twenty twenty-four I B C updates in terms of requiring outlets for bicycle rooms, for example. I don't, that's probably beyond the scope of the energy code, but the definition change is a great idea. I support it.
Is the, sorry, go ahead. And I haven't had a chance to, to look at the code, but I wonder if with the change of the definitions, the, um, E V requirements would apply to e-bikes with, which don't quite fit in, in terms of how they're drafted specifically for motor vehicles.
Right. And in fact, i- i- to, um, your point or whoever's point about, I'm sorry, your point about unintended consequences, if suddenly they put in, uh, ten e-bike, one twenty volt e-bike charging stations and said, I met the code. That would be a terrible unintended consequence.
So maybe explore. Explore incorporating a change?
Well, we can, we can verify this, um, but we actually prescribe what constitutes the actual infrastructure in terms of rated circuit and and charge, you know, and, and what constitutes an E V charging station. So I don't believe that they can meet our, our code putting in a hundred and twenty volt bike charger. So I, I think we're okay. We can double check that, but, um, we do specify pretty prescriptively like what the amperage is and the specific rating of the equipment, et cetera. So um, I, I think we would be okay to, um, Rob's point.
Go ahead, Brad.
Uh, wi- with all respect to Carolyn, your comments about that, I wonder if that creates kind of a you know, a six point step to get to that though, and, and to Rob's point of uh, just taking it under advisement and then bringing it to the I B C might be the most, uh, direct way. We are trying to simplify codes and, and I, I just wonder if that's a, a more direct route for us to address that.
Yeah. So in fact, let's, let's, um, let me address, uh, motion maker at some point gets to address it. So my intention here obviously is to have, I, I was actually surprised that in fact it wasn't in T D M code, it wasn't in our actual building code. But here we are, we're talking about the energy conservation code. And we're talking about the requirement for electric vehicle charging. And so so I made the logical jump that, well, if we were, if, if this is part of the energy conservation code for that we're going to require electric car charging, then, well, this would be a fine spot to require, um, other electric vehicle charging. So my intention was to require other electric vehicle charging, not to jeopardize or impinge upon the requirement for, uh, electric car charging. So if in fact, the right place for um, electric bike, micro mobility charging requirements is in the building code, why is it the right place here for the, for a car charging?
It's a very good question.
I mean, a, a little bit of that is, um, informed by a lot of the service capacity requirements that come with electric vehicle charging that have energy consumption needs like that. That's why it started to get seeded um, back when the twenty twenty-one code was being, um, considered by the I E C C. It's now in the state energy M L code. Um, so I think we continue to re- retain it there. Uh, but that's just the genesis of how it landed in the energy code.
That's a great explanation and I'm I'm considering, I, I don't know if it's, oh, how is it allowed to vote no on your own motion?
We just withdraw it.
No, but I, yeah, I think we have, have we had a second?
Yes, and I think M L seconded it. But he, can he withdraw the motion?
Can?
We could just vote it down real quick.
Does, does anybody object to Mark withdrawing the motion?
No. Uh, I can't see, uh, Kurt or M L. Do you guys object to Mark withdrawing?
No.
No, I see. No, okay.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I, I will withdraw it. And I'll simply say that it, it needs to be in the building code. It needs to be in our T D M requirements. It needs to be somewhere. And maybe this isn't the right place for it. So there we go.
Well received. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. All right. I just need to see, um, Kurt's m- motion, please. All right, Kurt, do you want to, uh, make your motion?
Yeah, uh, I move that planning board recommend that city, that council requests staff to study possible modi- modifications to the COBEC to improve equity and housing affordability by significantly graduating the stringency of energy standards based on residential dwelling size. And may I speak to this?
Uh, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, so my concern is that currently we really, we impose the same level of energy co-, energy requirements on a fifteen hundred square foot, uh, house that we impose on a two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square foot house. And we impose the same on a three thousand as on a five thousand square foot house. And under the roadmap that was presented to us, even that distinction at three thousand square feet is going to go away by twenty thirty if we go down that, that pathway. So we'll have the same level of energy requirement, really, required for a fifteen hundred square foot house as for a five thousand square foot house. And to me, that's equality, but it's not equity. It's kind of like a flat tax, right? The flat tax is not equitable. And so I'm concerned about that direction. And I would love to see whether staff can find ways to uh, to, to require higher levels of energy efficiency, um, for larger l- larger houses. So that's the idea.
Yes, Mark.
So i- in, in, in support of that, as the second, I, I want to say that there are so many instances in life, in our tax code, in our current energy code, where we do equate, uh, equality with equity and we, um, we don't, uh, look to those that have the most to contribute the most. And I think Kurt's motion speaks to that progressiveness, as in progressiveness of a tax code in, in that progression that, uh, that needs to take place more often, uh, than it does currently.
Go ahead. Sorry, didn't see you had your hands up. My apologies.
That's okay. No problem. Um, I want to ask the same question. Uh, I want to ask staff, invite staff to respond about, um, is this something that are we missing something? Would this have any unintended negative consequences? Like, I don't understand, for example, is it much easier for a small structure to meet the, that same fifty percent requirement? As for a bigger structure, it's much harder. Like, I, I don't know that I totally understand the technical piece, so I just want staff to, invite staff to reply.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so larger homes are required to be net zero already. Anything over three thousand square feet is already required to be net zero. So it'd be hard for us to mandate anything beyond that, right? Because then we'd be asking them to literally suck carbon dioxide. Hey, maybe it'll, maybe we'll get there in twenty years. I'm not aware of anything right now, at least on a residential scale that will allow us to do that. So we already do, um, we already do require that. In terms of the smaller homes, we do have some things now. They're really aimed at accessory dwelling units. So you might have noticed we allow a prescriptive pathway for units a thousand square feet or less. We acknowledge nobody's building homes that small and bolder, right? But they are building accessory dwelling units. The idea behind that is that's a much cheaper pathway. You don't have to hire a design professional to come up with an energy model. You don't have to have all these experts. You just look at a simple, a cookbook of options is the way I would describe it. And you, as long as you comply with that cookbook of options, we consider the house to be completely code compliant. So it's, it's, it's intended to make it simpler and cheaper and easier for people to build these small dwelling units. It's a little harder in the terms of the middle, differentiating between, say, fifteen hundred and a three thousand square foot home. The thing I'm going to throw out there is we are still bound by the minimum standard set by the state. So we're a little bit beyond those. So we, we could maybe go down a, a touch, but the state, um, E R I requirement is actually fifty already. So we can't go less than fifty anyway. So it'd be hard for us to say, well, if you're a thousand to say two thousand square feet, we'll let you do sixty. We can't do that. That would be preempted by state energy code anyway. So we've tried to address this, but I will acknowledge it's a difficult conversation. I mean, it's and back to the other point I'll make with the equity versus equality side of this. If we allow people to build, or developers specifically, to build less efficient small homes, is that really equitable? Because the energy burden on those homes, they're now going to have an electricity bill or a gas bill if we allow gas, right? We don't know what those prices are going to do going into the future, whereas these people in a six thousand square foot home, then it's zero. They have no energy bill for the next thirty years or as long as that solar system lasts. So I'll, I'll just throw that food for thought out there. I don't know if Carolyn and Josh want to weigh in on this as well.
Yeah, thanks for, um, making that last point, Rob. I think that was where I was going to lean in. I think first, um, you know, all of our analysis says, um, you know, the incremental cost between where we are today and the, the fifty hers, um, as required, i- i- is not there, right? The, the, the ways to get there are already cost effective. So when we looked at what we had unintentionally done in, in the name of equity historically, is exactly what's being proposed here. Is we set more stringent requirements for the larger homes and less stringent ones for the smaller homes. And we heard quite significantly from community, from some of our engagement, um, with our um, connectors and, and others around the equity topic that the consequences, they did have the less efficient homes. And when gas prices skyrocketed, um, you know, they, they were seeing doubling of utility bills while our most affluent homes um, did not experience any impact of, of energy pricing because they were meeting their load on site. Like, that's very much the opposite of, of equity. Um, it's, and we neglect to think about the long-term operational costs. Um, when we think about first cost. And, and so this first cost is relatively small. It's not driving up the cost of construction or cost of affordability. The consequences were, we would straddle future occupants with higher energy costs, which is certainly concerning and, and kind of counter to where we've landed, um, today through feedback, um, from community, through our earlier conversations with the board and boards and, and council as well. So I would certainly be concerned about that. I think, um, it, it's, it's also worth noting, um, you know, when we think about incentives and other things around performance, um, what we've put in place here make all of these homes eligible for utility incentives. Um, that would go away if we sacrifice on efficiency as well. Um, so we'd be giving the incentives to the larger homes, um, that are all electric and high performing, and we'd be taking away incentives um, from smaller homes in, in the name of, of, you know, saving cents per fo- per square foot based on the analysis. Acknowledging that solar is, is an incremental cost, I would potentially offer a different answer there, but we do know that it provides, um, cost stabilization for all electric constructions. So that's why we um, continue to add the increased solar requirement and taking the, the E R, the E R I from fifty down to thirty. Um, I, I definitely very, be very concerned sacrificing anything on the fifty E R I for, for smaller structures. If we want to have a conversation about pushing the larger ones to a forty-seven, um, which is the appendix, I mean, I, I think that's maybe on the table, but again, we're giving them the better homes. Um, and is that the outcome we really want to be driving?
Okay, thanks, Carolyn, uh, M L.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I absolutely support what staff is, is saying. I don't think we're doing anyone a favor by promoting, um, lower performance for any product. So I won't be supporting this, um, this amendment.
Okay, thanks, M L. Kurt?
Hi, yeah, thanks for your responses. Uh, so first of all, all this is asking for is that staff study this, right? I, I don't know what the answer is. But I think that there potentially are some creative ways of going about this that we haven't discussed here. There might be some, actually some sort of transfers, uh, that might be, uh, available to allow, for example, larger houses to install solar that, um, that then would apply to a smaller house, for example. Or, you know, there, there's, there's a lot of creative things that we could potentially think about. And so this is just requesting that, that we study it and see if there's anything we can come up with. It's imposing absolutely no requirement that anything actually happened. But I think it's something that is worth studying, um, because uh, there, there is a significant impact um, on, you know, certainly on the affordability. Um, but there's more important, you know, people building really big houses have a, a huge, uh, carbon footprint just by virtue of the embodied carbon. If nothing else, love, and then you include all the stuff that they end up putting in their hu- houses and so on. They really are bearing a much greater burden of the, the carbon emissions in this world than people living in smaller houses, living smaller, smaller lives. And I feel like we need to address that somehow. And so this is requesting that staff study that and see, see what you can come up with. I know we've got a bunch of really brilliant, creative people on staff and uh, I think that there might be things that we can come up with. If not, then, then at least I think it's worth putting in the effort to drive.
Okay, thanks, Kurt. All right. So if there aren't other, other comments, uh, if you could bring the motion up again and I'll read it and then we will vote on it. All right, a motion, a planning board makes a motion recommending the council, the council requests staff to study possible modifications of the COBEC to improve equity and housing affordability by significantly graduating the stringency of energy standards based on residential dwelling unit size. Uh, M L?
No.
Mark?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Sarah's a no, so the motion fails. All right, um, staff, thank you guys very, very much for all the time you have put into this and, uh, for answering all of our many, many questions. I'm sure there will be more to come. Uh, we will take a five minute break and then we'll come back for matters.
Thanks, all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
ML and Kurt, if you don't mind, um, coming back online, that'd be awesome. You're hearing a lot of noise. It's us opening chocolate chip cookie bags. Except, of course, Laura, who's being very, very, very healthy.
Don't you wish you were here? Those were vegan cookies. I'd be all over it. I had my first vegan chocolate chip.
I'm sure.
Oh, are those Oreos? Oh, I'd have to go for it. Had your first vegan chocolate chip cookie.
It's horrible. I'm sorry.
There are some bad ones.
This, this was bad. This was very bad.
Was it gluten-free also? Sometimes they try to do that, and it's just like, that's like saying I need to be diabetic and it needs to be low salt and low fat. You take too many things away. It's just.
I think if you're going to eat a cookie, eat a cookie. All right, uh, we are back in session. Uh, ML, I think will join us, is, is, when she can.
She's still on the Zoom call. She just doesn't have her video on.
Okay, great. All right. All right. So our, what we have to deal with tonight in matters is, um, the letter to city council. And, uh, I want to, before we start, because there's been some back and forth, uh, about exactly like, what is the purpose of the letter? So I just want to read, and then I asked Brad to speak to something. I just want to read the letter that came from the city council assistant about the letter. This came before we started this conversation. I think it'll help us to all be on the same page. So it's, hello, board, commission, and police oversight panel chairs, staff liaisons, and department directors. Uh, I hope this email finds you well during the regular city council meeting on February 1st, 2024. Council members expressed a desire to hear from the city boards, commissions, and panels as they embark on their annual retreat occurring April 3rd and 4th. Their specific prompt is, as a whole board, commissioner, panel, city council invites you to share the top two or three community issues or opportunities on your mind and/or the top two or three items on your group's existing work plan for council's awareness ahead of their annual retreat. Please note the following: feedback can take, be taken in any, can take any written format, a letter, memo, et cetera. Council members are most interested in hearing from groups as a whole. In your mech messaging, you are welcome to acknowledge dissenting or minority opinions to the majority consensus. Providing written feedback in response to council's prompt is completely optional based on your group's ability, capacity, and desire to do so. Uh, and it gives the date. The information you provide will inform individual council members of your perspective as they develop proposals for council priority actions in the 2024-25 term. So I just wanted to lay that out. Um, we do not need to have, uh, complete agreement. But if we don't have complete agreement, we're gonna, we have the opportunity to talk about the things that we don't agree on, or why we don't agree on them, or subtleties that we have, uh, regarding particular issues or topics. And then Brad, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, uh, good evening, planning board again. First of all, um, since it did give you wide license on the format, I was going to make a staff recommendation that it be in the form of an interpretive dance. Now, that, that's just a suggestion, so.
I hear Sarah's very good at that.
Can debate that one, of course. But more to the point, I, uh, have followed some of the email discussion about then in particular questions or, or discussion around, uh, parking in TDM. Entirely the board's choice, uh, of course, but I did want to inform you that, um, much like the embodied energy work plan that we just kind of alluded to, we have a work plan for a, a large number of items, but some of the key ones, or one of the key ones is a comprehensive look at parking. In fact, uh, so comprehensive, I don't even know that we should be calling it parking, but it's, uh, essentially a look at, uh, parking management, uh, for on-street and off-street parking, uh, which we're just starting to scope, but we recognize that, um, it needs to be a comprehensive look at, uh, all aspects of parking, uh, not only traditional zoning, kind of minimums, maximums, whether to have those, whether they're more or less, those types of traditional things. But in addition to that, being one leg of the stool, uh, two other legs being, uh, TDM's traffic, uh, demand management, providing more continuity and specificity and predictability around that, uh, is envisioned to be explored as is, uh, NPP, the neighborhood parking plan, which has historically been used as a reaction to a need. Uh, there's a lot of people at Chautauqua or at the university, so let's create parking in the neighborhoods affected by that, uh, and turning that question on its head about whether it could be potentially prospectively used as a tool for densification and new development in existing areas and, and somehow interplay with, uh, new development. No conclusions on that, but just giving you a sense of the scope of the project that we've committed to as a work plan item at this point. Again, it certainly something you could include in your letter and reinforce, but just do know that it's, it's, uh, being planned. And if there's other items that come up tonight, I'd, I'd be happy to let you know if that's already on the plan as well.
Great, thanks so much. Um, so why don't we, Kurt and Laura, you guys are in charge. Um, I do have a suggestion, which is that we start with the stuff we, we're all pretty much in agreement on. See if we can get, check those off first, and then get to the stuff that there seems to be some, um, uh, friction over. How does that sound to you guys?
That sounds good to me. And I just want to clarify an assumption that I have, which is, you know, the, I really appreciated you reading the guidance from, from, uh, the council assistants
Yeah.
of what they suggest we do. It sounds like majority consensus with minority dissent is possible. And so I guess my assumption was, this is, this letter is coming from planning board. And our decision rule is four members need to say yes to something to have, make it happen. So my assumption is that in this letter, if four members want an item to stay in, then it would stay in. But absolutely opportunity for dissent, you know, to, to describe that in whatever way the people who are not in the majority would like to. Does that work for everybody?
Well, it works, it works for me. I think we'd want to wait to, I, I have to say, we've never, I've never been in a situation where we voted on elements of the letter because we tend, generally try to reach consensus, but it's totally fine if we do it this way. But I think we should wait then until next week to have our vote because George will actually, will all be, the six of us will actually be here next week. And that will be the last time, the only time that the full board meets before the letter is, uh, sent off to, is finalized and sent off to, um, city council.
I think that sounds great to me. I would like for George to be part of this discussion too. So maybe we wait until next week to think about which items are in and which items are out. And this week, we just focus on clarification and any wordsmithing, that kind of thing. The other question I have is whether, you know, city council has suggested top two or three items. I'm not sure that that is a restriction, that we are only allowed two or three items. My sense is we don't have a whole lot of items on the list. Some may drop off if people feel that, that they're already in the work plan and we don't need to have them, although I'm totally open to keeping them in as a way to uplift or support or elevate staff priorities. But maybe next week, we also talk about whether we feel we need to pare down to two or three, or if we're okay with including more. And again, maybe have that conversation when we're all here.
And what are, what are folks' thoughts about that plan?
Well, I, um, my only, my only comment is that we, we do have a limited, there was a lot of, uh, emails that were, um, did not comport with the Colorado Open Meetings Act. And, um, this is an opportunity to legally wordsmith, or if, if someone says, I really want to put that in, and, you know, I've drafted this thing and I'd like us to take a look at this tonight, then I think this is an opportunity to do that. I'll just voice, uh, my quick opinion, um, in light of Brad coming forth and talking about the holistic view of parking, TDM, neighborhood parking program, et cetera. Uh, I've been thinking a great deal about that, and I looked at your, um, send here. I looked at your wording and the fact that you had it broken, those topics broken into two items. So I edited that into one, and I support keeping it in. Because A, it's great that it's in the work plan, but let's continue to emphasize it because it's, it's important to me. And I think it's important to most of the board. So, um, I've drafted a, a little bit on that. And if we want to look at that tonight, I'm, I'm, I would be happy to do it.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry if I seem to imply otherwise. I definitely think that's a great use of our time tonight is to look at what's already drafted, either in the draft letter that Kurt and I proposed, or absolutely certainly anything that anybody else wants to bring in tonight for consideration, wordsmithing. And then we would have a, a compiled letter for next time that we have worked on tonight to do the, the voting and the final wordsmithing.
And to Sarah's point, if there's things that, uh, the five of us here tonight say, by God, we love this and we're going to keep this in, in spite of George not being here, um, then that's a, that's a clear indication. And if there is clear consensus tonight that, hey, I'm not interested in that, then, and, and, again, not to try to ace George out. I want his involvement and his input, but if it's really clear that George or not, this, something would, would not be included, whatever, then I think let's, let's go fishing.
So, uh, ML, uh, why don't you, you have something to say? And I'll just say, George did send us his thoughts. So we, we do have them, but I, I, there's, we only have five of us here tonight, and there's only six of, six of us on the board, even though it's a seven-person board. And I think it would be best for board cohesion if the six of us are able to finalize the letter. So ML, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, so I have a question actually for Brad. Can, can you, um, and my question is, um, would inclusion of a holistic carbon reduction impact lens, in our planning board letter, would it give you and your staff any additional, um, support, uh, from council? Would it ma, would it make any difference to your work? If, if we, um, put something together that encouraged, uh, a tool for the boards and commissions and city council to use in, in that regard?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. Honestly, I don't think it would, ML. We are already gotten direction in, uh, I, well, maybe direction's not quite the right word, but, we had, had done a study session in the fall with council on the energy code, and they had brought this issue up of embodied, and there was a lot of head nodding and agreement that this would be an important thing to bring. agreement that this would be an important thing to bring forward as a new work plan item. It came in the context of some people asking, boy, shouldn't we be including this in the energy code? And we explained that that really goes beyond the energy code into IPC and also would mean probably another, a year delay or longer in the energy code than there was consensus that really, you know, wasn't something they wanted to do. None of us did. But they, they already expressed a clear preference. So no, I don't think there'd be any advantage.
Okay. I appreciate that. You know, I'm just, I'm just looking for a tool. You know, that can, that can help guide the decisions because it seems that it's a pretty significant consideration that we don't really have criteria or means to look at the decisions we're making to. So I appreciate that staff is working on it, and I won't be trying to draft up something for our letter.
Kurt, do you mind if I let Mark go? He's, he's chomping at the bit to respond to ML. I want to let him do that.
ML, you're, I just wanted to respond in the sense of saying your idea got me thinking, and I spent some time, and I'm going to ask if you have on the city's website for the Climate Initiative website, and there is, there is substantial, there is no shortage of, of tools and lenses and goals available to us and that the city has, has adopted. And my concern with your proposal was that it potentially is another work item to create another lens, to create another sort of thing versus actually creating actionable code or requirements. And so that, that was after spending time on the Climate Initiatives site and looking at their work. It, I was, my feeling was, we have a lot there, we just need to implement it.
ML, do you want to respond at all? Or no? Okay. All right, Kurt, you've waited patiently. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Yeah, just quickly, I, we can see where the discussion goes tonight, but my feeling is with this letter, less is more, and my preference would be if there even two or perhaps three things that we can really get consensus on among this whole, the all six of us, that that would be great. I think if we start to get into dissents and Kurt says this, but ML thinks that and stuff, it could get really complicated and the reality is council has a lot of these letters coming in, and if anything gets beyond half a page or something, I think they're going to have trouble processing it all. So I think the brevity, brevity is, would be a good goal.
Okay. All right. So maybe we start with what we have consensus on, or let's run through and see what we have consensus on.
Can we get the letter put up somewhere?
Okay, Thomas is going to put it up.
I can.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
The only thing George added was the idea of an area plan for Diagonal Plaza.
Okay.
And then he had some thoughts. I actually brought his, he had some thoughts about trying to take out some of the stuff that was more, wasn't really data-based, but was more an opinion about what a consequence might be.
I should go back and read his.
I've got it right here.
I avoided looking at it because of the whole, and now I want to, I didn't go back and read it, which is a.
Well, we did put it, his letter was put into the public record.
I just didn't have time to read.
Yeah, I'm happy to read it while Thomas is pulling this up, or not? Here, I'll read it. All right. So this is George's letter. All, I will be on an international flight the evening of our planning board meeting on Tuesday and will not be able to attend. Thanks Kurt and Laura for providing the initial draft of the planning board letter. Here are some brief comments below on what I am in support of, not in supportive, and would like to add that I would like to be considered at the meeting. Overall, if I had my druthers, I'd limit our letter to three items, housing affordability, zoning in Boulder Valley Comp Plan, housing choice survey, and a sub-community plan for the Diagonal Plaza area. These are three impactful areas that will come before planning board and may not be on council's priorities. I am also okay with adding the TDM. I like limiting the three topics, but believe this is also important and may not be prioritized by city council without our letter. I'm not okay with the airport for the reasons stated below. Parentheses, I don't have an informed opinion on the airport because it's not an issue planning board has weighed in on. Further clarifications and thoughts on wordings below. Number one, housing affordability as a focus area of the 2025 BVCP update. Agreed this should be on here. However, it's important not to overstate. It's not clear to me, nor am I aware of any data that, quote, relative affordability has been improved. I would strike that seems more like a political statement, not a data-driven statement. Item two, airport. This has not come to planning board in any meaningful way. We have not been studying it as a board, and I do not believe it's something we should weigh in on at this time. I do not have an understanding of the scenarios suggested, as it is not something we've studied at PB. While I appreciate Laura's passion on this and think she's leading a petition for the closure of the airport as a private citizen, I don't think it's appropriate that PB weigh in on it without at least a study session of our own or something coming in front of us. That said, what is clearly missing from this letter that has come in front of the board is sub-community planning process for the Diagonal Plaza area. I believe we should replace the airport topic in this letter with urging a planning process begin in the Diagonal Plaza area, given that redevelopment is happening now. Redevelopment there is happening now, and it is something that planning board has weighed in on. Three, housing trace survey. This is critical for Boulder and is at the core of much of our work. I would emphasize that we need to understand the needs of middle income in our community to retain and build this part of our community. As it is clear, a barbell effect of luxury housing and low-income housing is being developed, while middle-income housing is rarely have ever seen in planning, in, ever seen by planning board. I believe this can also inform the airport and other planning efforts like future sub-community plans. I'd move this to topic two. Number four, okay with TDM as worded. I think off-street parking will be coming up and their varying views in the community. Stated in our meeting, I think leaving this out would be, would be fine because I'd like the things we suggest to be prioritized outside of what we know is already being prioritized by this council. We are preaching to the choir rather than making an impact with this item. It is also true that number one, which was housing affordability as a focus area of BVCP, already includes parking as a component. Further stating that reduced or eliminated parking requirements would lower housing costs is not necessarily true. Neither is that, neither is that by doing so would necessarily result in more green space, et cetera. Some of the projects where we unbundled parking like Olive have not yielded any additional affordability. I'm wary of data-light political statements in our letter from planning board. Thanks all for reading this and incorporating these thoughts into the next draft of the letter. Sorry to miss the meeting on Tuesday. All the best, George.
I've placed the draft of the letter here, and then Mark's drafted section is below whenever we're ready to review that.
Why don't you guys go ahead and take charge?
Kurt, do you want to lead on walking us through this first one?
Sure, I can do that. So I'll just read it. Housing affordability as a focus area of the 2025 BVCP update. Last year's zoning for affordable housing project made important progress in allowing more smaller housing units to be built on a given site in certain zones, thereby improving housing supply and relative affordability. However, these reforms were limited in some zones by restrictions in the land use descriptions of the BVCP. We urge council to direct that one focus of the coming BVCP update be modifying these descriptions to further build upon the model of zoning for affordable housing to unambiguously allow for and encourage more affordable dwelling types. And I think George wanted to strike the thereby, thereby improving housing supply or the relative, relative affordability. Yeah.
So I have a suggestion, if you don't mind, I tried to come up with some alternative language that was much shorter, since we are trying to make this concise. And it was as part of, because I think the, I think it's something we want to encourage council to look at. And it's very simple. Don't, you don't need to type anything yet. As part of council's planning for the upcoming BVCP update, consider additional land use description revisions as a possible tool to catalyze more diverse dwelling types to serve the varied housing needs of our community.
Well, I don't want to interrupt your.
That's the whole thing. It's one sentence.
This is not inconsistent with potentially adding this to the letter, but I did want to advise the board that we had committed at the zoning for affordability, housing affordability discussion with council when they adopted that last year to a 2.0 review of potentially expanding on, on some of the discussion that came out of the council meeting. So we're already embarked on that, and part of that is looking at the the zone districts and how they interplay with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Again, that doesn't need to dissuade you from having this. I just wanted to give you an update on, on some of that progress is already being undertaken.
Does that work plan item have a name?
Zoning for housing affordability 2.0.
Okay.
Actually, I think phase two is the term that staff uses.
So we could just
Phase two.
Much the same way, we could just be surfacing that the way we would with TDM. We could say, we, we are supportive of city council continuing to pursue phase two of zoning for affordable housing.
Yeah.
That saves us a lot of space.
Kurt, what do you think of that suggestion? Okay, so just simply saying, I mean, it sounds like we might have a section of the letter that says, here's our top priorities. And also, we just want to uplift and support these already committed to work plan items, such as zoning for affordable housing phase two and the parking and TDM management reforms.
You're saying, don't make those actual items, but put, just put them as an end, like a footnote?
I, I might, if our, if our goal is simply to support a staff item and and not add anything to it, but just say, we love this priority, please keep it in the work plan. That, to me, could be a coda rather than item by item. And that would save council some time, it'd save us some time.
So my response to that is, our job, we don't want to make more work for council, for staff. I think if we can indicate that we agree with the direction that council will be discussing at, or the items that council will be discussing at their retreat. Personally, I think that's super helpful to them. If we totally disagreed, that would also be helpful to them, that they know that. But I think the fact that two, at least two of the items that we have are already on the work plan and therefore dovetail nicely with what planning staff, planning staff will be bringing to planning board in the coming year, I would actually prioritize that over new items. That's my sense.
I would be fine with putting it first, right? But I'm just suggesting that it be shortened and not necessarily take the place of new items.
Go ahead, and then I want.
So I concur, Sarah, that, that I think that the items that we have consensus on that are really important. If, if no one told me what staff already had in their work plan, and I had to prioritize, I would prioritize the housing affordability focus and TDM regardless. But in the fact that just because staff has them in their work plan, doesn't mean that they don't need support and prioritization. And to that end, I do question, I, I don't want the housing affordability 2.0 to be tied to the BVCP update really at all, because that's something that could, I don't know, could it get done in 2024? Long before, long before the BVCP update is done. So just.
What's your question, the 2.0 in 24? Yeah, that's very much the intent.
Yeah, so I would.
Could it be in preparation, also in prepar, and it will serve?
To serve, to inform the BVCP update, but, but I don't want it tied to the BVCP update. I want it to happen before that, so.
Does that make sense?
It, it does, but I thought that some of the items that were being considered in phase two were put into phase two, at least some of them, because they would require changes to the BVCP, and that staff could not do that without changes to the BVCP. But there may be some of them that can be done in advance of the BVCP update. Is that, Brad, am I remembering that correctly?
You are. That is a little bit of an open question. We're studying that right now. You know, it's fair to say that there will still be a look at the land use types in the update to the comprehensive plan, and that'll get into housing and housing types and density, so. That, that's why I kind of prefaced and said that I don't know that they're necessarily mutually exclusive. You can include both, but I just wanted to make sure you were informed with the information that we are working on zoning for housing affordability, phase two.
Thank you. That's useful. I'm sure that we can write this in a way that says, we're supportive of the zoning for affordable housing project phase two, including items that may inform the update for BVCP.
ML, you have your hand up.
I do. I'm like, oh, yeah. I, I will weigh in on agreeing that the sort to lend support to the work that is already being done by staff. I think, I think it's important for city council to hear from us the things that we feel will help us be more effective. And so I think both the I'm not exactly sure how much further the housing, the zoning for affordability can go with regards to making more opportunities available. I think the sort of stop, the brakes are right now, the brake that is on, on hold for being able to fulfill what the zoning allows, i.e. duplexes and plexes in in the other, other zones that are limited currently by the intensity standards, density and intensity standards of the land use. You know, that's a BVCP thing. So I'm not exactly sure how much, how much zoning itself, how much more zoning itself can do. Of course, I'm not working on it, and I'm not Brad. I, I think that including BVCP in that language will be important because it holds some very big brakes on, on housing affordability insofar as land use goes. And the TDM and the parking, I think, Mark, you had a combination so that they would be kind of one, one.
You should have that as, as an email from me, and I.
Yeah, I don't have my, you remember how my computer was freezing up? I don't have my email.
I'm not ready to move on to TDM. If we're, do we have some resolution on this first item?
Well, I was saying, just to, just to conclude, was I'm in agreement that we prioritize and put at the top, support things that staff is already working on before we outline, you know, the couple of things that we are putting on the table that might not be already on staff's. So I was just supporting that format.
And Kurt, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, well, I think that both of these items, both the zoning for affordable housing 2.0 and the combination of parking, TDM, and NPP are things that we could mention briefly and just say, as other people mentioned, we can, we support staff's direction in, you know, in regard to these. I do think that for the zoning for affordable housing, we should mention the relationship to the BVCP because I agree that that's an important component.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with, it sounds to me like we're mostly all saying the same thing, that these two, these two items are already on the work plan, we want to reinforce them as priorities, and we want the housing 2.0 to connect to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan.
Inclusive, but not exclusive.
Yeah, whatever, however you want the language to read.
Yep.
Okay.
That's what I heard too, and I think Kurt and I can make those changes.
Excellent.
If you're okay with us continuing to be
Oh, totally, totally. You signed up for it. You can't get out of it now.
Trying. That wiggling you see is an interpretive dance. Wiggle out of it.
I I might suggest going to things that we know are more.
Sure, we can skip this one for now.
For now. I don't know what else is on there.
Kurt, what's next? That is, oh, the housing choice survey.
I take it this is Brad, this is not something that's on your work plan, the housing, housing trace survey. Okay.
Sarah, do you want to walk us through this one? You don't necessarily have to read it, but do you want to talk about your?
So, so as I said, yes, last week. We haven't had a housing trace survey since 2014. It's now a decade later. Lots of things have changed. I think as we move forward with whatever kind of zoning changes we have, we want to know what the housing needs and desires are of people who live here and people who commute in here and missing middle. I think it's fair to say that most of what has been built in the last 10 years meets the needs of a slice of of Boulderites and doesn't meet the needs of many, many others. Which is why we have so many in commuters. So I think it's actually a valuable building block for any discussion of zoning, housing policy, height, density, intensity, setbacks. It's all driven by what it I I personally think it should all be driven, not all, but it should partially be driven by what we understand the needs, the housing needs to be. So I think it's a valuable add to the discussion. So that's my take on it.
Mark, is it okay if I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, to take it away. So, Mark.
My my question about this is is this asking a question that we all know the answer to? In in terms of what do we want? We want missing middle. I agree. We are building X. We're we're building low income housing that's supported by BHP. We are building rental apartments of one and two bedroom sizes. And we're building expensive, single family homes, you know, where someone wants to tear down the house. And so we know what's what's missing. And but by doing a survey, we we answer that question again. But is the is the actual solution to that? The construction defects law, reform of construction defects law that that in combination with insurance restrictions, no one and developers not getting insurance. Is that the actual cause of us not building for sale condominiums and flats that we would be building because there's a huge demand for them, but no one can get insurance. And the construction defects laws that we have on the books are prohibiting that. That's what I understand from the development community is we know, we know they want it. We can't build it.
Well, so if you actually read the 2014 housing choice surveys, the plurality, there's no majority for any one particular housing type, but the plurality particularly for in commuters who already own a home with a yard and parking. They want the opportunity to own something and they want a yard, right? Because many of them are families with kids. And we don't build that. And our condos aren't that way either. I live in a condo. I do not have a yard. And most condos don't. They might have a slab in the back, the way we're building them now. So the, I think that it's the the policy solutions which are state issues are state issues. But there are local issues that have that would affect zoning or rezoning. And I think that we have operated, we have let our housing policy be driven by what developers want to build, not by what folks who want to live here need or work here need or not adequately reflecting the needs of folks who want to live or or work here need. And the consequence is that we have families with children moving out of town. They're moving to Lewisville, Longmont and Lafayette. Our school populations are declining. That is a problem for a city that you want to be a robust, multi generational city. And also a more socio economically diverse city than what we have. So I still think it's valuable. I mean, if 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 there's not, if people aren't in agreement with me, that's totally fine. But I still think it's very valuable. And I actually would love to hear what what ML has to say, since we can't see her.
ML, did you have your hand up?
I didn't, but I had my eyes open.
Please go ahead. Open my mouth.
I you know, in hearing both what Mark and and Sarah are saying about this, I think we're talking about, or I think the intent was, let's get some data. We're working on old data, if we're working on data at all. The you know, the the most amount of housing that we have that we have passed on this board has been student housing. And it's been a mighty lot of student housing. And I don't know where that need falls in the category. What percent of the need is that in our city? We don't know. And I think this item is simply saying, we just need more information. So I I like information. I think data driven explorations are a wise way to proceed in many instances. So I I don't, I don't see it as being a a problem. I think that the city council might be reminded, oh, yeah. We did do a survey back a decade ago, and maybe it is time. So anyway, that's my thought about that. I think I think it's about gathering current information, which which is always useful.
Thank you, ML. Kurt, you have your hand up, and I also have a comment. Go ahead.
Sounds good. I don't think I support this. I don't think that the obstacle really is lack of data. I mean, we had data in 2014 and we didn't really act on it. And we could get data again, and I think it would pretty much show the same thing. And the question is, would we act on it? I think the obstacle here is more political will than the lack of data. So if this is going to take time and resources or staff energy or whatever, that could be better devoted into into other things, then I don't think that it's a worthwhile exercise.
Thank you, Kurt. My comment is, I definitely believe in getting data and old data, a decade is definitely old data. The major criticism that I have heard about the housing choice study is that it's divorced from economics, right? Like, everybody wants a house with a yard. But the price of that in Boulder is going to be very different for the square footage than what you get somewhere else. So I guess, would it be possible to do another housing choice survey, but include the economic piece? Like, would you be willing to move to Boulder if you could get a townhome with a yard that costs X amount and give realistic costing of what these different housing types would cost? Because, yeah, everybody will say that they want a certain housing type. But when it comes to making that choice for their family, they're going to look at what can I buy in Louisville versus what can I buy in Boulder? And make a realistic economic choice. So I would be supportive of doing a housing choice survey if it included some of that economics somehow. And I don't know how to do it, you know, I'm I'm not the surveyor, but I don't know. What do you think of that, Sarah?
I think that would be fine. I'd I think whoever would be the consultant who would design it would have to determine whether it's how how that's doable or if it's doable. And I just want to point to something. So you know, when we did, when we did the zoning for affordable housing, what we approved was allowing triplexes on larger lots. And I said several times, I think to Brad, why aren't we considering allowing small cottage, multiple small cottages on large lots? Like Pop Poplar, is it called Poplar Grove? That area, those 10 little cottages. And it's not what we considered, but there are large lots, like we, we could revisit this question of what we're allowing on large lots, which would allow us to build the kind of small, single family homes that share a yard, that, you know, share a common area and have one parking spot and, you know, all that stuff. If we're thinking creatively and we are incentivized, not incentivized, but we recognize that that is a desired housing type. Rather than, oh, we'll just build town. And I I can't now remember why we chose townhomes over something else for those large lots. But if I think I think we can be thinking, we can marry the new data with zoning afford, with zoning changes that might bring us more diverse housing stock than we are getting, that we have gotten in the last 10 years.
Thank you, Sarah. Can I ask Brad? In zoning for affordable housing 2.0, is doing the kind of large lot reassessment to allow for cottage homes and that type of thing that Sarah is suggesting, could that be part of the zoning for affordable housing 2.0? Is that on the table?
I think that is being considered, but I can't say that for absolute sure, certainty. Yeah.
Perhaps we could put that in that item that we would suggest considering that, because I think I saw a lot of heads nodding that people might prefer cottage homes, small cottage homes to duplexes and
I have a preference. It's just, oh, it's widening the aperture. Like, I don't think it's a preference necessarily. Sorry.
I will check with Hella real quick. She's been in a few meetings. I haven't been, you know, if there's been discussion about cottages versus townhomes and some of that discussion.
I think we're not quite that far along yet.
That's what I remember. Yeah.
Kurt has his hand up. But maybe we could tuck that in. But Kurt.
Oh, I was just going to say that I I totally agree with Sarah. I think it would be fantastic if we could allow small cottages on large lots. I think that would be wonderful. I'm not sure that we need more data to do that, though. I think, you know, we could, we could do that tomorrow. And we know, I can 100% guarantee that if we, somebody built those, they would, people would love them, right? People would would buy them or rent them or whatever. It's just not clear to me that we need more data for that. Basically, any kind of reasonably attractive housing that we provide in Boulder, people are going to want.
Thank you, Kurt. ML, your hand is up.
So I'm just thinking aloud, do, is there a connection between the supporting the continued affordable housing zoning exploration and this this survey? To try to, to speak to what Mark was saying, it's just like, well, we don't do anything about. We have data, but we don't do anything. We don't do anything that actually informs a different outcome. I'm wondering if we can intend actionable items by relating the survey to accountability in zoning to to start creating pathways to achievable results, to getting some results. I think that that has been our disconnect, where you've talked to anybody in the city of Boulder and you hear the same thing, right? We, we want to be able to either stay here if we've already, we're already here. Or we want to be able to to live here and and not be subject to rents and not be subject to all those uncertainties. So I'm, I'm just wondering if making a relationship between the two would be putting new thinking in front of council so that it it it's like, we want different outcomes.
Thank you, ML, being an integrator here. Sarah, you're the author of this item. What do you think about, is there, do you see some kind of merger with the zoning for affordable housing? Or do you feel like it's still a separate item?
Well, I think that since the 2.0 is already happening, it should be a separate item. So that we, again, we're prioritizing what's our, we're reinforcing support for what's already happening. And then we can have a separate item that says, we see this, we we see this, the collection of this kind of data as helping to inform the 2.0 work. So make it separate. That's how I would go about it.
Okay, so I'm going to defer to the original author of that provision and say, Sarah, are you okay with including, you said you're okay with including something about pricing, trying to include?
Economics.
Economics.
The economics of it, and if if that's what a consultant is able to do.
Okay. So in terms of next steps for that particular item, you know, we talked about for some of these other items, we can condense them down a bit. But it seems like yours is a new item. Would you suggest any changes to the language based on what we've talked about tonight, other than including that economic piece? Or do you want to just sort of mull on it and bring it back for next week?
Well, I'm getting ready to go on an international trip, so I'm not actually going to be working on this.
Okay.
So I, you take this and edit it around as you see fit and add what you see. You know, connect it back to 2.0 and add the economics piece. I'm fine with whatever you come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Like, I think you could actually even you, there's, we don't need to edit it now, but you could probably edit it down quite a bit and to add back in the the two items that ML has brought up, the connection to 2.0 and the 2.0 and the economic part.
Okay, I think Kurt and I can do that if you're comfortable.
Totally comfortable.
And if you want to send us any edits, if you, like, you're just struck by inspiration and you want to
If I'm struck by inspiration, I will send you something.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to move on to the next item? Okay, moving on. Can we pull back up the original? Okay, so refinement and adoption of TDM policy. Mark, you sent us some language that would combine this.
To the very bottom of this.
At the very bottom. Okay.
Yeah, go all the way to
Going to Mark's language now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is that Mark's drafted section?
Yeah, stop and stop there. So I I just drew a line. I was editing your stuff. And anyway, all that stuff below, I'm not including. So the
Start with site review.
Start, yeah.
And and with development applicants?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to give us a second to just read through it for anybody who hasn't read through it?
Yeah, just read through it for us.
Okay, I don't think it, we don't need to read it out loud, but we can just take a look at it. Okay, so just one thing that jumps out at me from a facilitation perspective. Did everybody have a chance to read it? Yeah, I see ML nodding. Kurt, did you have a chance to read it yet? Kurt's nodding. Sarah's good. The one thing that jumps out at me is it doesn't currently refer to the fact that this is a work plan item for staff. And I think that we wanted to just kind of uplift it as staff are already working on this. But I also see there's some stuff in here that you might want council to think about, right? Like, the fact that the current TDM toolkit is vague, subjective, you want to be creative and forward thinking. So I'm wondering if we can combine this into something short that refers to staff's current work plan item?
Sure, I I think the the last paragraph. You know, adding a few words to the last paragraph and adding on that this is this, this or something like this is currently a staff work plan is is fine. You could, yeah.
Okay, are, do you want to take a stab at that? Or do you want me and Kurt to take a stab at that for next week?
Why don't you take what I have and?
Condense it down. Okay. Kurt, are you good with that? Kurt's got a thumbs up. Any discussion, ML or Sarah?
I think it's fine. I would actually just use the last paragraph. I think the last paragraph like sums it up really nicely and add add some clauses and and be done with it.
My, my whole
You're gestalt.
I wrote it down. Now you can throw it away.
It was beautifully written.
It was very well written, and I think it's well, it's well taken, right? That you have made this point several times, and I think we've all heard it, and we all agree with you that this can
And you're going to hear it again really soon.
And staff, staff has heard it. So thank you, staff, for for taking on this work plan item. Say again, Brad? What are we talking about? I don't know. It's almost, it's 9:37. So George had an item related to Diagonal Plaza. Sarah, do you want to share water for that one?
Well, I I can't speak for George, but as you all, I think you all were here when the I don't remember the name of that project, Bill Holick's project that is on the Old Sports Authority parcel at Diagonal Plaza. And at the time, there was a discussion of well, there was a discussion well, there was a discussion of should there also be an area planning process? Because that is a very large site and it's owned by mul-, there's multiple parcels with multiple owners. And if everybody builds their own thing, you're not going to have a very cohesive or coherent, um, neighborhood. And it could be this really incredible neighborhood center. And so again, I'm putting words in George's mouth. I don't know exactly what he was meaning, but I think that that was a, it was a, um, it's a really good idea, frankly. Um, area planning is a very valuable way to create cohesive, cohesive parts of the city. And in that area in particular, this is, this is just my opinion. That Diagonal Plaza in particular should be a center, a neighborhood center where all the surrounding suburban style neighborhoods are able to bike and walk to for restaurants and grocery stores and the gym and what, you know, whatever else. And, um, if we don't have an area planned for that, we are, we cannot guarantee that that part of town is going to get that kind of uh, heartbeat. So I actually think it's a really good idea.
Okay. And I just looked back at George's email to make sure I'm remembering it. And the only thing he says is a sub community plan for the Diagonal Plaza area. I think he means a sub area plan, but yeah.
An area plan, yeah. And area plans are actually a fundamental part of the Bolo Rally Comp Plan. We, we encourage area planning as a, as a, as a tool for building, uh, this is not the right language, but building comprehensively. So anyways.
Yep. Kurt has his hand up. Thoughts, Kurt?
Yeah. My question is whether this is mooted by the fact that this project is already going forward. I mean, that's certainly not covering all of Diagonal Plaza, but I think that they prob-, the area plan probably would have had significantly more valuable value when we had the entire site to work with. So I don't know. Sarah, you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I, I agree with you about that statement. It would have been way more valuable to do the area plan, uh, before that project went through. Uh, there were, uh, pressures. There were, there were public, a lot of public comments, uh, pushing back against the idea of an area plan prior to building, some of which had to do with, uh, that development, I believe is in the opportunity zone. And the developer was eager to benefit from it being, from getting started, uh, financially benefit. I mean, he even said that they were excited. It wasn't Bill. It was the guy from, uh,
Trammell Crow.
Thank you, Trammell Crow. Um, and so then we suggested, well, why don't we do them side by side? You go ahead and build your building and in the same time we'll be doing an area plan and that got shot down too. But I think that you're, you are correct that it would have been more valuable, but there's still three fourths of that acreage left. So I don't think, um, and what, what's being built is attractive and it's got, it, you know, it's, it's nice enough. I, I don't, that's not, I don't mean to be dismissive of it. It's, it's a nice, it's nice. And they've created a, an areas, uh, including the, um, Boulder Housing Partners, uh, buildings that are part of that area. So I think it's still a very, I can make a good argument for it still being a very valuable process for the city to undertake.
Kurt is nodding. Did you want to respond, Kurt?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mark?
Just clarification. Is an area plan, what, what is the size requirement for an area plan? What, how do you define an area and versus a sub community? And, um, and is this more like a parcel plan? Uh, because it's act, is it, is it small for an area?
Uh, I was going to say the size was eight point three six acres, but that seemed flippant.
Well.
But it is getting a little late. No, I, I don't know of any distinction between sub community and area plan, but I am also relatively new. There might be some distinction in.
I, I think there are 10 set sub communities that comprise the entire.
Yeah.
The entire city of Boulder. So you can go and see a sub community map and see every inch of Boulder falls into one of those sub communities. An area plan is something smaller that fits within a sub community plan for some defined area. But I don't know that there's any definition of what would need to be in an area plan.
But it's not as, it's not as, it's not as onerous as what they did for East Boulder Sub Community Plan.
Right.
It's not that kind of onerous.
Yeah. Yeah. It would be scaled to the size of the.
Okay.
It's described in the BVCP. I think it has the sub communities and then talks about what an area plan is. And they have been very small area plans. The junior academy plan was an area plan. So that's the development.
Right.
Near three eleven maybe.
That's helpful. Thank you.
It's much better than my answer.
Trust the lawyers.
You just can't control your smart.
It is also late.
Okay. So I think that for the sake of time, we can just say, this is an idea that has some legs. And we will put it in the draft for next time to talk about, is this something we want in the letter?
Right. And George will be here to defend his idea.
Yep. I, I support that. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion before we move to our, what I think is our last item? Okay. Can we put the, uh, language back up from the original letter?
It's time where to go.
Uh, scroll up please to item number two. Okay. So further study of airport scenarios, three and four. Has everybody had a chance to read this? This was in the original proposal, seeing nods from ML. Okay. And I know Kurt has read it. So, um, I will just briefly say that I will respectfully disagree with George. I think this has come to this body in the form of, there was a liaison to the airport community conversation for a year, which was me, and I spent a year learning about this topic. We did have very abbreviated discussion about it here at planning board. And in our, um, in our meeting, I think two, two meetings ago, we had a very lengthy report from staff with conclusion of that airport community conversation. And this item is meant to build upon that conclusion from the airport community conversation and suggest a next step to fill in some missing data. Could we scroll down to these two diagrams? So I take George's point that he doesn't understand much about these scenarios. And I would say, not to be flippant, but nobody really does. The, this is the extent of the description of these scenarios that exist. That 500 page report that was given on the airport community conversation, there's no additional description of what these scenarios mean. And so this item is just meant to say, hey, this doesn't feel like enough information for council to make potentially a very significant land use decision. And one of these scenarios, scenario three is airport growth and addition of uses within the context of an airport. And the other one is, um, the decommission scenario, decommission replaced with a neighborhood. So this is not favoring one of those over the other. These were the top two scenarios that emerged from that airport community conversation. There were four. These are the two that rose to the top based on staff analysis and based on community input. And so this is really just meant to say, these sketches are not enough information to make a very serious land use decision and that we as planning board think that council should have more information. So I'll stop there and say, any questions or discussion?
Is it okay?
Yes, Mark.
Um, would you envision that the, the studying or expansion of, uh, or elaboration on items three and four from this, from the, would, uh, have? Does that change anything? As a community informed enough now about a decommissioning possibility, cost, the actual possibility, they're all, do, did the airport study give us enough information? Uh, and would this have to create additional information? Or is this just these two scenarios? We already have this whole decommissioning piece over here to inform a decision?
That's a great question. So we do not yet have that information, but council requested that staff study the feasibility of decommissioning, both economic and legal feasibility, as well as talking to the FAA and come back with results. Those results were initially thought that they would come back in Q1 of this year, but staff have informed us that it's going to be Q3 of this year. And that's why there's that line in that item that says that at council's discretion, they could hold off on this work plan item until they get that feasibility information and then see if they want to direct staff to pursue further information. The main concern is just putting it on staff's radar for the work plan so that we don't end up in the same situation that we had last time where it wasn't in the work plan. And that is part of the reason why that additional analysis has not been done.
Thank you.
And I did want to ask Brad, um, you know, Brad, you mentioned that there were items in our letter that staff might already be working on. And if staff are already working on this, to your knowledge, I'm happy to bump it into that section of, we support that staff are already working on this.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're not working on it in, in the same sense. We are, uh, certainly, engaged with transportation and mobility, who is the lead sponsor in this, but, um, uh, this kind of gets to earlier conversations about land use designation versus the process that they've been initiating on the scenarios and others.
Thank you, Brad. So it sounds like it's not currently in staff's work plan to do, to do this work.
ML has her head.
ML.
Um, so Laura, who, who did, who developed those, um, scenarios?
The scenarios were developed by the transportation staff and their consultant, Kim Lee Horn, as part of the airport community conversation.
So they, what, if I understand, maybe I don't understand the, um, the recommendation here, the item. We're asking, planning, who are we asking to take on the, the steps that you feel the gathering of information and assessing that information? So that city council can have a better understanding of. Who are you asking to do that?
Yeah. So I assume that it would be a collaboration between transportation, notably the airport staff and planning, planning and development services. The housing, the, the decommission and create a neighborhood would require planning, uh, P and D S input. And possibly also, so that scenario three does include, as it says in the title, limited housing, which would be work, live work housing over hangers. Um, and I don't know if P and D S would need to comment on that, or if the airport staff are able to do that piece. But I assume it would be a collaboration between those two departments.
And right now they don't currently have a collaboration between those two departments?
The airport community conversation, as Brad noted, was led by the transportation department with, I think, very limited input from P and D S and no significant input into the development of the scenarios, as I understand it, but I could be wrong about that.
No, that's correct. I mean, we're collaborating in as much as we're, you know, making sure to. Yeah, same city. And also, you know, making sure that we're informed, you know, that the, uh, transportation mobility is informed about any land use aspects of it. But to date, that has been part of, that hasn't been a main part of the scope of their work. This is what's being advocated, as I understand it.
Thank you. Did that answer your questions, ML?
Um, maybe. I need to see the language again.
Shall we pull it up?
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. While we're doing that, any other questions or discussion? The hour is growing late, but I appreciate everyone's indulgence that, uh, just because this item is last, it doesn't get short shrift. So, yes, thank you.
So I'm, I'll comment, um, and Laura and I have discussed, uh, my concerns, which have to do with, um, her wearing two hats here and, uh, um, I don't need to go into those concerns because she and I have had that conversation, but I think it's risky for, uh, public trust in a board that has the, uh, responsibility and power that we have for, um, uh, a member of the board to be, um, both privately, the, a lead on a, on a, for, seek cert, pursuing a particular outcome, which I, I may or may not actually agree with. Um, and then, um, bringing to the board, uh, an effort to help move that forward. Um, so I, I have most, mostly my concern is about the implications of, of, um, of the intersection of Laura's personal advocacy work and her role on planning board.
And Sarah, I appreciate you bringing that up. You probably can anticipate my response will be to turn to Hella and say, I do think it's important for the public trust, as Sarah pointed out in this body, to clarify what, you know, what the city's code of conduct requires and whether planning board discussion of this item should be in any way related to hindered by, uh, my private political speech.
Um, I, I don't think that it, I think planning board discussions of the item is okay. And I, I think it's fine for Laura to bring up the item. Uh, Laura does have private political speech rights, first amendment rights, um, when she's acting as a private citizen. And I've looked at the code of conduct and the code looks at, conflict situations mainly in terms of whether there's some kind of value that's conveyed to the public official that's acting, whether there's a conflict. But if the, the private citizen is in the same situation as a large group of the community, then there is no conflict. And, um, in, in Laura's situation, she's not receiving any kind of personal benefit from her, her efforts and association, what, what might happen at the airport or not. Um, she, she doesn't have any property interests out there. Her family doesn't, she doesn't have any contractual relationships where, where people with whom she has those relationships might benefit from it. She would be affected by what happens at the airport in the future, just like most members of the community would be affected.
So if I could just respond to that, because this is, we've already had this, you guys should know, we've already had this conversation. And I don't think this is a question about code. I think this is a question about, um, wearing one hat at a time. And I, I appreciate Laura's enthusiasm and focus on this particular issue. But I, I, there are hundreds of residents of Boulder who disagree strongly with what your hope for outcome is. And they're going to come before planning, maybe they'll come before planning board if this ever comes before planning board. And essentially, you're, it's a, it's a appearance, impropriety seems like such a strong word, but it, it, I just think the appearance of divided interests on your part is really problematic for, for how the rest of the community understands our responsibilities here. So I've said this to Laura, we've gone back and forth on this. We're not going to be in agreement on this, but I want people to understand why I'm, why I have a problem with this.
And, and I would like to respond to that. And then Mark, so member, and, and this is something that I've talked about with the attorneys and I talked about them, I talked about this issue with them before I acted in any way politically on this issue outside of planning board as a private citizen. That by being a member of planning board, we do not give up our rights to political association or our rights to political speech. Members of planning board have written letters to the editor. Members of planning board have expressed strong opinions to city council, both in writing and verbally. Members of planning board have donated to political causes. They have endorsed political measures. They have worked on political campaigns. And I think it's a very slippery slope to say that we don't have the right to do that. And I understand that you may see a petition effort as being different from those other things, but I don't think they're different in kind. And I don't think that's a road that we want to go down and saying that just because a planning board member expresses an opinion in public, even a strong opinion, that they are then somehow compromised in talking about that item before planning board. Cause you're, this is one thing I talked about with Hella and Laurel, our other attorney, is that if planning board members were expected to not have political speech and to remain neutral on legislative topics, not quasi judicial, but legislative topics, you either wouldn't get anybody applying for planning board who has any kind of experience on the issues. Or, and this is my personal take, this is not something that an attorney has said, or you. Or you risk having, just driving that activity underground and not being transparent about it. So my personal choice is to be transparent about what I am doing and why. And here, for this particular item before Planning Board, it is not advocating an outcome, is advocating for good planning. It is advocating for data, the same thing that we were talking about with the housing choice study. It's saying that we don't currently have the data for city council to make an informed decision between these two scenarios, one of which will be heavily supported by people who advocate for the airport and one of which will be heavily supported by people who advocate for decommissioning. This is not thumb on the scales, this is advocating for good data. So that's, that's my pitch about why I'm bringing this forward to Planning Board in this way. If four members of Planning Board do not agree that this should be in the letter, then it won't be in the letter. But for me, this is something that is a potentially a really significant planning issue for the city that has not been adequately described, not even studied, but even described of what do these scenarios mean? So I will stop there. Mark, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I sometimes, sometimes an item in a work plan letter is just an item in a work plan letter. And if I read that item on its face to explore the two scenarios that were the highest vote getters in a council initiated process, regardless of anything you've had to do with it outside of that. So I, I, Sarah, I, I share your concerns about the appearances of impropriety, et cetera. But in this case, when I read the suggested language and, and look at what it is, and I look at that and leave everything else aside, that's actually, I think that's a good work plan item. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Kurt or ML? ML has her hand up.
Thank you. So I, you know, I, I, I think that the bottom line regards to the two hats or the one hat or the many hats, I think it's a matter of perception, not legality. Really is what it, what it'll come down to if the, you know, citizens of Boulder perceive it as, oh, my gosh, there's a conflict. But anyway, that's just my perspective of that whole thing. The, the, I think for me, and I wonder if, if Brad, can I ask you a question here?
You have to come up because she can't hear you.
Brad says, of course.
Brad doesn't want to move?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. So in looking closer at what Laura is proposing, to me, that looks like a concept design. I'm not sure what it would look like to you, but I'm wondering, is this sort of something that planning and development or city in some capacity would do outside of a working group or a directed, like the airport study was? It seems to me like it's a concept plan.
Yeah, I, I don't know the exact semantics. I don't know if you could put that back up there again, Thomas. But when I've read the letter as drafted, I, I kind of interpret that as a work plan. Where was the language there?
It's in the middle. It says a work plan item to estimate potential full build out and impacts of each of these scenarios, including factors such as potential number of housing units, including permanently affordable housing.
Yeah.
Potential number of businesses, et cetera.
Yeah, so whether, you know, you would call that a concept plan or a sub community plan or a, you know, land use type plan. I mean, these are all things kind of implied by that. I don't know if that answers your question.
I guess my question really is, does this recommendation to, to council, does this sound like something that your department or a city department would could undertake? Is this a common thing? Do you guys do this?
Can I just clarify? This is not meant to be the level of detail of the kind of concept plans that we see. This really is meant to be estimating impacts, round numbers. Because right now, the only numbers that we have on this are coming from advocates. And the idea here is that it should not be coming from advocates, it should be coming from city staff, advocates on one side or the other.
So to answer the question, yeah, this is the type of work a planning department would do. Obviously, would we, with direction, we would have to weigh it against other work plan items, direction from council, that kind of thing. But and would, you know, would we have consultants, yes, no? Would, obviously, we'd work with other departments too.
So this is common, this, this would not be something that, that falls out of what regular scope of, of work items.
No, I think it's within our, it, it's within our competencies as a department.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion? The last sentence, the work plan could be held to start after the staff report is delivered regarding feasibility. I might move that up. Since we are, there's still information coming in that council's going to take into account as they decide. And we got nine smart people on council, they're going to ask all kinds of questions. So I have no doubt that whatever comes back to them in Q3 will prompt lots of conversation. But I think if, if we, if this work plan item proposal is included to frame it as something to happen after the decommissioning report, the feasibility report comes in, to me, I'm more comfortable with that, just because it, it's, it's a more, it meets, it's more reflective of the actual timeline that the city has, is working on.
I would be fine with that. Thank you for that, Sarah. Okay, any more discussion of this? Before we say, we'll come back with a new draft of all of the items that we discussed. I don't know, Kurt, if you, I don't see your hand up, but you've been quiet.
Hi, I'm just getting tired. But no, I don't have anything to say. I've been taking some notes on some of this. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm good with everything that's been discussed.
So I, I will close this part of the discussion and turn it back over to Sarah. I just want to say thank you, everybody, for your great comments, your good humor and your patience with all of this tonight.
Great, thank you. Debrief, calendar check? Anything we need to know, except that all of March, our meetings will be online? So no free, no free lunches, no free dinners?
Yes, and just that, I've got, I went ahead and scheduled the, the second draft review for this item that we've been discussing for next week's meeting.
Great, thank you so much. You are awesome. Thank you. Brad, anything besides you'd like to go home?
No, I appreciate the robust discussion. And it does bring to mind that maybe we should bring a summary of our work plan to you at some point in the future, so.
Do thumbs up for me.
All right.
That'd be great. A thumbs up from our folks distant. All right. I am adjourning the meeting and it's 10:06. We will see each other next week via Zoom.
Does Hella have something?
Oh, sorry, Hella, sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I may have missed it. The next plan for the letter, are Kurt and Laura going to work on a next draft?
We've got a Zoom privately scheduled.
Okay, so Mark is kidding. Mark is our fiercest defender of open meeting laws. So I think the next step, I will clarify so that you hear us say it, that the next step is for Kurt and I to take the feedback that was received tonight, create a second draft and send it to this board for absolutely no further comment or discussion until our next meeting.
And I, I would recommend that you send it to Thomas and then Thomas adds it to the packet.
Oh, great idea.
And then any further discussion of it should occur at the next meeting.
Hella had an ulterior motive of making our process better. Thank you, Hella. We will do that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Hella?
No, that, that's it.
We are now at 10:07 officially adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, guys.
Good night. Thank you.